You have to have a call here. Tim's on the way in. Is Robert here? Spears, Spears.
I'm here.
Waddell. Sanders.
Here.
Jordan.
Here.
Chair is here, everybody's got it counted for. Morning, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We'd like to thank you for taking time out of your day as always to do this. As you know, this is probably the most important thing that we do all year long. We wanted to begin this process as early as we could to check in with the fair during the development of this document. You'll note from the agenda that this meeting is considerably longer than most that we have planned in the past. We hope to complete the agenda today, but if we don't, we'll move the items to an agenda briefing somewhere in the near future and hopefully finish the review then. Last year, I made some critical errors in the development of FY25 budget process. It's had some noteworthy implications towards the end. The biggest mistake was that I assumed previously accepted and adopted process would provide a good framework for the development of budget. I didn't account for the introduction of two new budget members and the residual effect of the skyline building. This year, we intend to be more deliberate as we begin the FY26 budget development process. Today's workshop is designed to accomplish several objectives. First, we need to review where we believe we stood at the closing of the most recently completed fiscal year FY24. While we haven't completed our year in audit yet, the numbers were finalized enough that we can conduct some solid analysis. It's important to know what you've got available before you begin the development of the next budget. Second, we need to take a long range look at the overall funding and expenditures. There will be rough estimates based on long term trends that don't yet include some of the FY25 actual numbers. Third, we'd like to solicit feedback from council regarding your top priorities for budget development. At this point, we're not looking for specific allocations to particular causes, but rather directional areas of emphasis on which the council can agree. Fourth, we'd like to know as a staff that we are prepared to move forward, we are prepared to move forward with a particular direction, absent further direction from you. So today we are seeking direction from you. Finally, we'd like to obtain feedback on the meeting schedule and the opportunities that you'll have to provide feedback on the direction and the preparation of the budget as it's taking place. Please remember that the budget that you receive in May is the city manager's recommended budget. And while we attempt to fashion a proposal that meets your desires, it is possible there will be differences between the opinion of the manager and amongst yourselves on what the final adopted budget might look like. If you've taken time to look ahead in your budget workshop materials that were distributed earlier this week, you'll note a couple of things. First of all, the general fund revenue is expected to grow somewhere between 1.5 and $5 million. At this point, we've projected the overall revenue growth to be approximately 2.5%. We're certain, certainly, there's certainly not enough to keep up with the existing rate of inflation, which is currently 3.1%. Second, in accord with council's previously provided direction, we have surveyed public safety salaries for a group of competitors and have found that we are currently behind the market to the tune of almost $2 million annually. To say nothing of how much further behind we'll be in eight months. That $2 million does not include paying the leading wage of this, for this cohort. Previously set council direction on compensation has been to pay the median salary range, a practice that ensures that outliers on both ends of the scales are precluded from consideration so as to avoid tipping the scales inappropriately one way or the other. If council wishes to set a different policy or choose a different cohort for comparison, then we ask that you supply us with that information today. While we have snuck in some salaries, the salary data for public works employees, this survey only included approximately 60% of the positions that the city has. And as you'll see in the presentations, it did not include some departments on which we have, in which we have some of the highest vacancy rates. I have some heartburn regarding the exclusion of positions which have such high vacancy rates, but I understand the reason. Any adjustments made in conjunction with the adoption of the forthcoming budget will have to include even more money to cover the entire employee population. This lag in salaries is going to continue as long as we are existing in the existing labor market. As a result of this early projection with regard to revenue growth, I've already had a conversation with the department heads about not submitting program enhancements with their budget requests unless those enhancements can be included and accommodated within the existing FY25 budget amounts. Ongoing contract escalations, existing program increases will be accommodated, but changes in service must be made within FY25 allocations. This will put significant pressure on the city to prioritize an already limited scope for services. It may have the effect of cleaning up the closet, but the reduction and elimination of services is something that will be as difficult to prioritize as the inclusion of new services. This direction was provided on the assumption that city council was not interested in entertaining a tax rate increase in successive years. If that assumption is incorrect, you need to provide us that information. As a city, we are growing, we are going to have to come to grips with a revenue base that grows at a rate of inflation that's significantly lower than, or grows at a rate that is significantly lower than that of inflation. Not only do prices continue to rise, but the ever present need to attract and retain good employees with competitive compensation remains a constant top priority for everyone. Combine those factors with an aging infrastructure, an inability to grow our tax base through annexation to accommodate ever expanding service level rise, and efforts to make our city more desirable for those who live and visit with us. And you have a collision of paradigms that does not lend itself to an easy resolution. We need to come to consensus on how we want to address this long term issue. We can continue to address it on an annual basis with the adoption of each successive budget, but we really need a long term strategy that provides us all with the expectation for successive budget years. We originally had an exercise on this agenda that was designed to start to get that long term strat, develop that long stream of strategy. But we had to remove it in the interest of time. We anticipate bringing that exercise to you in your January workshop. concludes my opening remarks. If you have no questions, we will jump right into it with Ms. Moretti, who will do a review of the most recently completed fiscal year. Yes, sir.
Good morning. Before I begin and start to tell you how we ended fiscal year 24, I do want to take the opportunity to introduce all of you to my replacement, your new finance director, Martha Wayne. We were fortunate enough to have some time for me to work with her before my final day. So it'll be a great transition and she'll be able to hit the ground running once I, once I do depart. We are very glad to have her here with us. While they get the slides up there on the Thank you.
We've got a minute to now. At least she smiled.
All right, well, let's get going while they're cleaning that up. As Mr. Collo mentioned, we're going to review our fiscal year 24 year end financials. Also, as he mentioned, we are still in the middle of, well, towards the end of our audit for fiscal year 24. So the numbers that I am sharing with you are considered unaudited at this point. But this far into the audit, we don't expect any changes to occur with the numbers that I'm showing you. So what I'm showing you here is a high level summary of each of our major funds. So the first four funds listed are our enterprise funds. These are our fees. Fee fund, fee rated funds. And then finally would be the general fund. The columns before you, that first column is the adjusted budget. So this includes what was adopted for fiscal year 24 and any amendments that were made for the year. The next two columns show what we actually received in revenues for each of these funds. And then what we actually spent in the expenses actual column. The difference between our revenue actual and our expense actual gives us our total fund balance change. So looking at that column, you can see that we were positive in each of our major funds. This means we did not need to use any of our fund balance in any of these funds for fiscal year 24. The next column is our unassigned fund balance. These are the funds that we talk about most when we have emergency situations, unexpected events, some projects that come up during the year that were not included in the budget. We look at this to see, do we have funding that we can allocate towards these uses? Then finally, we have the percentage. That is the percent of the unassigned fund balance to the adjusted budget or operating budget. So we do have policy limits and we make sure that we stay within those limits. You will notice that stormwater and parking and golf have a little bit higher percentage. And that is because they fund capital projects with those funds. So as projects come up and in the annual budget, we do transfer funding from these major funds over to those capital projects to fund those projects. I do want you to note the amount that is shown in total fund balance change. Later on, we'll go over what the change from unassigned funds from one year to the next. And you will see that that is not going to be the same impact to unassigned fund balance as we have in total funds. And I'll get into that and explain that a little bit later. First going to review our enterprise fund revenues. This is the revenue budget to actual. And with our budget, I did remove the appropriated fund balance that we had adopted in the, in the budget. So as things come up during the year, we'll come to council and, you know, appropriate fund balance to cover those expenses. And as you can see from the first slide, we didn't need to use any of those fund balance. But I did remove that to get an actual of what we budgeted for revenues compared to what we actually received. And you can see that all of our actual revenues came in higher than what our budgeted amounts were. So going into this a little bit deeper, for recycling and trash, we received $504,000 more in our fees than what we had budgeted. We did increase our rates in July of '23, which was continuing the needs that were identified in the rate study that was conducted in fiscal year '21. And a theme that you'll see throughout this is our investment earnings came in much higher than what we budgeted. For recycling and trash, our investment earnings were $242,000 more than what we had budgeted, given the higher rates in the market this year. For stormwater, they did receive $41,000 less in fees than what we had budgeted. Rates were increased 1% in July of '23. However, investment earnings in this fund were $574,000 more than what we had budgeted. And that's why their overall revenues came in higher than their overall budget. For the parking fund, they received $592,000 more in fees than what was budgeted and investment earnings were $553,000 more than budgeted. Parking fines, however, were lower by $253,000. Parking implemented their second year of a three year fee adjustment plan in fiscal year '24. These revenues will be used to fund capital improvement needs at various debt locations. For the golf fund, they received $390,000 more than budgeted. Rate fees for fiscal year '24 increases included a $2 modification in green fees. These revenues will be used to fund various improvements in operation needs. The meeting continues to see strong numbers and rounds played since COVID. Fiscal year '24, they had 64,704 rounds compared to what we were seeing in fiscal year '22 at 59,308. So it continues to, to increase year over year. Fiscal year '22 was 59,308. Moving over to our expenses from our enterprise funds, comparing our actual expenses to what we have budgeted. For all other enterprise funds, you can see that our actual expenses were lower than what our budget was. So higher revenue, lower expenses. For the recycling and trash services, our actual expenses were lower than budget by $1.4 million. This difference is made up of 700,000 lower in salaries and budget due to vacancies and turnover that we see in the recycling and trash department. The other 700,000 was lower operating costs, which included 258,000 lower in land, landfill disposal fees. For the stormwater fund, expenses were lower than budget by 1.3 million. Of this amount, 1 million was from salary and benefits due to vacancies and turnover in the stormwater. 300,000 was lower than budget for other operating costs. Our parking expenses are 1.2 million below budget. Here, we only had 126,000 lower from salary benefits. 623,000 were lower from professional services related to our parking management contracts. And 356,000 were for other services. In the golf fund, our expenses were 202,000 below budget. Of this amount, 126 was from salary and benefits, and 75 in various supplies and services. This slide represents our overall general fund budget for revenues. Again, not including the amount we had appropriated to use a fund balance, which for '24 was $10,304,000. So removing the appropriated fund balance, our budget is 147.8 million. Our actual revenues came in at 150.8 million. Revenues received exceeded our budget by 3 million. With this chart, you can see that our major revenue sources, our property taxes and sales taxes, which together make up over 75% of our revenues. For fiscal year '24, we received $239,000 more in property tax revenue than what we budgeted. But we received 2.47 million less in our sales tax revenues. And as we tell you every year, sales tax is one of those hard to project revenue sources due to the timing and the allocation process and the reliance on the consumer. Our interest earnings, however, had a $2.9 million increase from budget. We budgeted $1.5 million in '24, we received 4.4 million in interest from. The other category there includes miscellaneous revenues such as insurance reimbursements, leases, sale of our assets. This was 1.3 million above budget. Yes, sir.
Sales tax revenue.
It was 2.47 less than what we had budgeted. Well, if you recall, when we were talking about our fiscal year '25 budget, we did bring that to your attention that when we were preparing the '24 budget. I remember we're three and a half months behind in receiving our sales tax. So we base it on a trend. And so we've seen the first half of the fiscal year coming in stronger than the prior year. But when we got to the second half of the year, we started seeing that reduce. We were still having growth, but not as strong as the first part of the year. Our budget for '24 was higher than what we were seeing in that trend. We still had increases in sales tax from the prior year, but not at the level that we had thought we were going to have. And so as we explained when we were preparing fiscal year '25 budget, we did keep that budget amount level for fiscal year '25 because we had that $2 million difference in there. So, so '25, we'll see it come in much closer. Hopefully it'll be stronger like we've seen in previous years. But again, it just has to do with when we're putting together our budget and estimating those numbers to when that revenue was actually coming in. And a good example of that is we've only received one of our sales tax revenues for this fiscal year so far. So July is, we just received in October, so it is, so it makes it even harder to project. And looking at our general fund expenses budget to actual. Our overall general fund expenses were $7.4 million below the amended budget. Two and a half million is in salary and benefits. Yes, sir. 7.4 below amended budget and 2.5 from salary and benefits. The chart here is broken down by functions for comparison purposes. For our general government, 4.8 million below what we budgeted. Of that amount, 1.6 million is salary and benefits and 2.9 in operations, which are supplies, staff, training, services. Included in that amount, however, 1.9 million will be rolled into the current fiscal year for services that were ongoing that we brought over into the fiscal year, we'll finish those out. For public safety, this came in 338,000 under budget. Our salary and benefits, however, were 400,000 over budget. Included in this was 391,000 in separation payouts from people who had retired or left the public safety departments.
Sorry, what was that number?
400,000 was over budget and salary and benefits. And of that, 391,000 was from separation payouts.
You know what helped me a lot? I'm not as far as everybody's table, but these numbers are true.
Yes, sir.
It should be nice if they were in there.
Okay.
Just sort of scrambling trying to remember what you said right there.
Yeah, yeah. I'll get those together and send them out to you. For public safety, we had 696,000 that came in under budget. With our economic and physical development, that function was 162,000 under budget, of which 93 from salary and benefits. Would you go back to transportation? Yes, sir. Transportation was 991,000 below our budget. Of that amount, 609 was from salary and benefits. The other was in operations. With cultural and recreation, 1.1 million under budget. Of that amount, 648 was from salary and benefits. The transit column there, that is the transfer the city makes to waive every year, which for fiscal year '24 was at 1.7 million. And then the other column includes our transfers to other funds. So what I'm showing you here, as we talked about on the first slide, this is our 24 unassigned fund balance change from one year to the next. So you can see from here, the unassigned fund balance runs from fiscal year '23 compared to '24. And if you look back at the first chart, you'll see that our total fund balance change is not the same amount as these. These are the funds that we use again for those one time nonrecurring costs. And with that, you can see the percentage that is there. And I always show you this slide just to help you understand a little bit better what fund balance is made up of. So we have five categories of fund balance. The first four are, have funds that have restrictions on them. And anything that's not in those first four, whatever is left becomes unassigned. So that is what we talk about, we are using unassigned fund balance for. So the change in our total fund balance from '23 to '24, again, is under $100,000. But you can see unassigned was about 6 million. The biggest difference here, if you look at, is under the assigned category, subsequent years expenditures. When we prepare our budget for the next year and we estimate how much fund balance we're going to use to balance that following year, we have to record that as a subsequent year expenditure in our fund balance. So for fiscal year '24, when we were preparing that budget, we estimated we were going to use eight and a half million dollars to balance the budget for '24 when we adopted the '24 budget. We have to show that as a subsequent years expenditure and remove it from our unassigned fund balance when we end the year '23. So for '25, when we were preparing that budget, we estimated we were going to use just under $2.2 million to balance the fiscal year '25 budget. So because there was a $6 million difference there and all of the other categories didn't have much of a difference and change, our unassigned fund balance therefore increased that $6 million, which is the difference in what we appropriated to use for fund balance for the following year.
What's that on the side, the 45,504,30 as a percentage of budget?
That was 28.77 if you look at your previous page.
Subsequent year expenditure, that's bring the budget round.
Yeah, we have to adopt a balanced budget. So our budget for revenues balance our budget for expenditures. And so when we're preparing the budget, we look at what are those one time nonrecurring capital needs that we have that we can fund with the unassigned fund balance still keeping within our policy limit and then not taking from the funding that's allowable for the operations of the, of the city. And this is just a chart showing you what our general fund, unassigned fund balance has been year over year for the last 11 years. So of course, as you know, we're always trying to maintain a very healthy unassigned fund balance. Fiscal year '19 was the result of Hurricane Florence, and that's why that dropped down. And as you recall, for those of you that were here, we did also have to take funding from our debt service fund. We were fortunate enough to get that reimbursement for our debris removal back before the end of the fiscal year, put that back into the debt service fund before the fiscal year '19 ended. But we did have to take funding from our general fund and our debt service fund to respond to the needs of our community related to Hurricane Florence. So it is important, given where we are and our vulnerabilities to the hurricanes, that we do maintain a healthy fund balance of on our general fund.
We're still outstanding money.
Yes, sir, I have a chart for that, we'll go over that. And so this slide here shows you the funding that we have in what we call our capital balance accounts. So these funds accumulate when our projects close and have unrestricted funding remaining as well as interest that is earned on those unrestricted funding in the projects. So these are all from our project accounts. When we complete a project, if there's unrestricted funding left in that project, we move it over to cap balances in that fund to be used for other capital project needs that they may come in and need additional. A contract came in more than what we thought, or a new project come in during the year. What we do before we come to council is we look at other projects. Are there other projects that we can close out? Can we move funding? Then we look at cap balances, how much funding do we have available over here that we can move to those projects? All of the funding for the cap balances will come back to council for funding. And then finally, if we're out of funding in the cap balances and don't have funding in the projects that we can move, that's when we come back to council and request to use appropriated fund balance. So I did want to show you where we're at with our convention center fund. I'm showing you the five years of our fund balance here for the convention center fund. And the reason I'm doing that is, as you all know, And the reason I'm doing that is, as you all know, when COVID hits, we took a big hit to our convention center fund balance. So prior to COVID, we were looking at, we were doing really well. Increases in remac occupancy tax event revenues, convention center was doing strong. We had, when we built the convention center, the general fund loaned the convention center fund two point one million dollars for the land purchase. So we had originally planned to pay that back prior to COVID coming in because the fund was doing well. When COVID came and it took, you know, hotels had to close, we had to couldn't hold events at convention sunny center anymore. We estimated a five million dollar loss in our convention center fund. We were able to, when we received the ARPA funds, look at our revenue loss and appropriate four point eight million from the ARPA funds to put back into the convention center fund to help it move along, because as you recall, we did keep it open. The city was holding our meetings over there, it allowed us to have the spacing that we needed to to have meetings. But it was a very difficult time for them and not knowing how long that pandemic period would would last. We're very cautious in using any of our funding here. Since that time, our room occupancy tax has rebounded. Started opening up back up around April of twenty twenty one, and then in July of twenty twenty one, we opened the Live of Pavilion. And so opening that venue helped bring more people into Wilmington, and that's when we started to see our room occupancy tax really rebound. And that helped us, you know, build this fund to back up. So for fiscal year twenty four and this year, we were able to make that payback to the general fund for the one, two point one million dollars. Yeah, that is payback. Yes, sir.
What was the, it's like the fund balance for the convention centers, it's pretty healthy, what was the fund balance prior, because what type of percentage were we holding?
We were probably, I can get that for two years, we keep a year over year. I'm now, I'll get that to you, but it was, like I said, we were estimating about a five million dollar loss, so we were probably around between ten and twelve million dollars.
So we're, I mean, today's numbers.
We might be a little bit better right now than we were prior to. So this is just showing you for the last five years, twenty twenty to twenty twenty four, a month over month comparison of the room occupancy tax. So our fiscal year goes from July through June. So you can see, I know it's hard to see. Create a different chart to show this, but till March of twenty twenty, that's when the pandemic hit. So you can see how the revenues started to decline in March and April. And then going into the next year and fiscal year twenty twenty one, they started to climb back up. Then July of twenty one, which is the first month of fiscal year twenty two, that's when we opened the amphitheater. You can see from that point on, we started to see our room occupancy tax revenues come in stronger month over month. So this last year in fiscal year twenty four was really a great year for the room occupancy tax. You can also see from this chart the trends, you can see in our winter months that room occupancy tax is, you know, it's very seasonable, so you can see when the low periods are and when the high periods are, yes, sir.
Does New Hanover County provide a mechanism to delineate between hotels and short term rentals?
We can check with them and see what.
I think that'd be great information. For CUB, as in what has to monitor that, so it was coming.
Okay, yeah, we'll get that for you.
And then we talk a lot about, we need more hotels, especially downtown. I mean, is it as simple as if we have more hotels because of this tax base, or we're at a point where we're at capacity for a lot of these live event events, is that clear?
Yes, you know.
In fact, the convention center has trouble finding hotels, they have to go out, sometimes have to outside of the district to be able to find hotels for for their events.
The municipal services district is where you're saying?
Downtown. City, is this just the tax district for the convention center? Or just all?
This is all Wilmington, Wilmington Convention Center, yes. And here, I'll show you, this is how that is distributed. So all of the revenue from room occupancy tax that comes into our convention center district, a hundred percent of that revenue comes into the convention center fund. And then outside of the convention center district, but still in Wilmington, fifty percent of that, or I'm sorry, yeah, three percent of that six percent comes to the convention center fund. The other three percent of that portion is split sixty forty between beach nourishment and then the tourism development authority for promotion of Wilmington and the convention center.
I can tell this to anybody, but fifty percent of the beach nourishment funded comes from hotels here. All three beaches. All we do, we give one hundred percent of this probably carved out here for CBD. That's the boat, and then with that, possibly sunset, that would go away. So there should be some foresight when we make the survey, but I'd like to make a search while we understand that we need that money to let somebody else to take care of our river walls and anything else.
That's like, just that, out of curiosity, if we were, if it was, when it does sunset, would it go to that sixty forty allocation?
Yes.
CBD basically overlaps with the convention center district.
It goes from bridge to bridge up to Wilt Fort Street, is that correct? And anything within that district, whether it be the RBOs, hotels, residences, all paid to that, so one hundred percent of that comes to pay. So that was. Good thing negotiation. We do very, but they will know.
And here is how, where we are standing right now with our hurricanes. So you can see what the estimated cost is for Florence and ESEA is, and I'm showing these two because these two were still open as of the end of fiscal year twenty four. So during fiscal year twenty three, we did not receive any reimbursements. Now, these storms were in fiscal year nineteen, which was September of eighteen, and then fiscal year twenty one, which is in September of twenty twenty. Fiscal year twenty three, we did not receive any reimbursements from FEMA on either one of these. In fiscal year twenty four, we received six hundred thousand reimbursements from Hurricane Florence, which really just happened in May, June of fiscal year twenty four. And then the majority, what was remaining of Hurricane ESEA is. So far this year in fiscal year twenty five, from July through October, we received about six million dollars in reimbursements in Hurricane Florence and then the final payment from Hurricane ESEA, so we are now completed with ESEA's. And we have about three million left to receive in for Hurricane Florence. Now of that three million dollars, a million of it is for the repairs at the convention center that we're still waiting on. And then just under a half a million dollars are from various buildings that we had damaged too. We are still working on one project, and that is the replacement of the parks maintenance building out at Wilson Park that was flooded, and so we got some to replace that building, and it's been a kind of back and forth in finding a location that would get approved from them that was not near any flooding, and then what type of building. And so that one's been the last project that we have that they are currently working on. Once all of those projects are completed and FEMA does their review and signs off on the one and a half million that you see there for the general fund, that is administration. So that is just an estimate based on a percentage of the storm costs. So that number may change, but that will be the absolute last payment that we receive once everything else is paid out, reviewed, approved, finalized. Then we will receive the final payment for administration, so that could still be a couple of years off before we do get to close this up.
Oh, that is true. Our staff handled a lot of that stuff.
Yes, sir.
Right, did we have to go outside also? Help us in that whole process?
Yeah, we, so probably, I don't know, a year or two before Florence hit, we did hire a management consulting company and have them on a retainer, so that if we did have a large storm, we could have them come in with their experience and help us review and write the projects. So every time, any, any, any damage that we identify, we have to write a project for with FEMA. And so then we have to do get estimated costs. And so giving our resources internally and the magnitude of that storm, it was really good that we had that contract on retainer, so we have renewed that, and that's one of our preposition contracts that we do for hurricanes every year.
So out of curiosity, that's just curious, if the smaller communities around, if you have the staff, if you don't have the where all of this, we did, or what do they? Internet consultant, consultant, something smaller.
Yeah, and before we had that, we didn't, and we just had to work with staff resources, and it does put more time delay on it, and then you're, you know, fighting with your estimates and trying to come up with that.
It's not a easy process.
It is not, it is not, and you know, the rules change every year. The thresholds change every year, so they have large projects and small projects. And if you underestimate, you're stuck with that estimation, and so then the city has to put forward the rest of it. We were able with Florence to do a couple amendments, some of them that came in higher, and they did approve those for us. So that that helped us out, but that's not always the case. And again, with North Carolina, we're very fortunate that with FEMA, FEMA covers seventy five percent of costs, they'll reimburse. North Carolina is a state that will cover the other twenty five percent. And so they do make that decision, and that is a big help for the communities in the state.
That's not true throughout the country.
That is not, no, sir.
What's the name of the group that we're obtained?
No, Hagerty's no longer, WIT, WIT O'Brien is the company. WIT O'Brien, yeah, it was Hagerty prior to.
Little slug job.
We try to keep them up to date.
There, both of those, both of those are working, what's the part to say?
And so that is all I have, if you have any questions, I will get these numbers out, so you can have those as I.
Sales tax, I know what state gives us that much. How much the city was receiving as opposed to the county receiving, I remember. That difference was, we did twenty percent maybe to get the rest, or eighteen percent. I understood that they quit, the state quit sharing that information with us. So is it actual on the sales tax, we will do twenty percent of that dollar, or we get less than that?
I do share that with us, we do that. So right now, we are twenty six percent of the distribution, New Hanover County seventy.
But again, what they don't share with us in Mormon marriage is where the sales tax is generated.
Right, yeah.
So they used to, they used to show when it was generated within the municipality and within the county. And due to budget constraints, they dropped that calculation, so now it's just by county.
That's, that's the piece that we felt like we liked the city with. Yes, change the numbers, I just like to see. So we're, so we're better than we used to, well, at least the way I just, at least where I always saw it, more than what I thought. Some, some years back, in a, nationwide, there was a big, a big hahahaha about sales tax, where, where the product is generated from, where it's ordered from, and it had a name, and I can't remember the name of it. And it had a great bearing on local sales tax revenue, because it was being paid in Kentucky when the person was ordered. I know you know what I'm talking about.
I do, there are several articles of sales tax, and so each article has a different calculation to it. And some of them are based on where the delivery, point of delivery is, where it's ordered. There's a, another calculation based, they, they look at all of the entities in North Carolina, and they have a calculation. So some will get more, some will get less, so it's not, so we'll have like three different articles that are quarter cent sales tax. You're not getting the same amount from each quarter cent sales tax based on these different calculations, and all that is spelled out in the general statutes, we can get that out to all of you.
The reason I ask, I mean, you know, every neighborhood has got UPS and FedEx trucks running through it on a daily basis. I mean, they stay in my neighborhood, and I don't live in a wealthy neighborhood. So my, and the only reason I say that is, you know, online ordering carries the day. And that's, there's a hell of a lot of sales tax generated.
Yeah, and they started that, they implemented that a couple of years ago, probably two thousand eighteen, nineteen. Yeah, and, and so then we started getting a, a, a big increase in sales tax because they were tough on putting sales tax on them.
So it has been. Yes, okay.
Yeah.
Fun balance, so the fund balances that we have in the enterprise fund, we can only use those fund balances specifically for those particular departments, state or whatever it may be. Except for parking, I think it's the only one that I went, where you could use the general fund supplement for.
Well, with parking, if it's supplemented with the general fund, you know, we're, we're paying back that. So with the parking fund, this, the city has routinely done the debt, any debt for parking, the general fund has subsidized that. So we're working on paying back the general fund for that, but there are no restrictions like there are in the other fee related funds that in the, in the parking. Right.
So what general, what we have effect to other, other areas of the ECI.
Yeah, and we started to pay back the general fund for the debt in fiscal year twenty five, so we'll see some of that coming back to the general fund to repay for debt that was previously paid out of the general fund.
This is got, you know, question for, yes, what slides, this five, six, seven. We, we overestimated expenses and underestimated revenues for both the general fund and the enterprise fund in last budget?
Yes, yes, based on, so what we were seeing, like, that was the, the reason I was telling you what our salary and benefits were lower because of the vacancies. We budget for full, full vacancies, and then we do a salary savings estimating that there is going to be some that we're going to have, and we do back that out, but we did have more vacancies than what we had anticipated in the budget. And so that was part of the reason our expenses came in so much lower than what we had budgeted. And then with the revenues, again, just trying to estimate what those revenues are, and the interest earnings was the biggest revenue source that came in over budget, and you know, it's really hard to predict what the market's going to do, and you know, the Fed has already done one cut, and they're supposed to determine if they're going to make another cut today for this year, so you know, that, we're not estimating what we're actually received in twenty four for the next year, because we know that they're talking about making these cuts, and so that's just something, you know, the budget is based on an estimate, the best information you have.
I understand it's predictable, I just, I'm trying to, did we, in, in, in year twenty three, of what twenty three, did we have the same overestimation of expenses and underestimation of revenues, not as, like, for a basis, but was it generally, like, both general and enterprise?
I'll have to go back and validate that, I knew that we did use fund balance. And so whether it was our revenues came in under or expenses came in over, but I'll have to go back and look and see how that was, but I know that we did use it. We, that was twenty four.
Then, page eight, the reference to the, the reference to public safety, the, what's three hundred and ninety one thousand in, in separation payouts, how many? This may be something for HR, but how many positions does that? Quite two?
He's going to go through, he's going to give an update on some of that, Clayton's going to.
Clay, will you just, maybe just bookmark or earmark that, that three hundred and ninety one thousand, maybe make a reference to how many positions that is, in your presentation?
So most of our, most of our estimated budget was due to that, that. A sound.
A large portion of it was for salary and benefits from vacancies and turnovers, and then others, you know, when you don't have the staff here, you don't have the training or the services, other things were estimations or time delays and different costs. Professional services, where we're contracting services. And when we're preparing the budget, remember, we, we're starting now for twenty six budget. And so we're so far ahead in trying to gauge what those costs are going to be, what the increases are going to be on our recurring operational costs, so, you know, going into with the budget, what we don't want to do is come back and say we're so much shorter, and now, you know, we need to appropriate the spun. And now, you know, we need to appropriate the fund balance or, you know, make any drastic changes, um, you know, freeze hiring or free services or anything to try and get back. So it is all based on trying to foresee what increases we're going to have in all of our operating costs. And then what, um, other costs will have as capital and, and different things and trying to estimate that ahead of time, as well as, um, know what revenues we're going to receive. So some of the other revenues, you know, our state revenues, um, and so telecommunication, um, ABC revenues. If you all recall, the last two years, we see over a million dollars more in revenue in ABC revenues. We didn't get that in fiscal year twenty-four, so that was a million dollars less in ABC revenues that we received the last two years. We still budgeted for it because it was a trend and thought that trend was going to continue, but it did not. So those are the kind of things that, you know, we try to balance when we're doing our budget.
Well, what was the cost for the loss of ABC revenue? They just didn't sell it?
Um, so with the ABC revenue, once they reach a certain threshold, they have to change their calculation. And so for the prior two years, they received more revenue than what they had anticipated and they reached that threshold. So they had to recalculate and then we received a large payout because of that for that fiscal year. They did not have that this year. I even double checked. I'm sure. Um, but yeah, they did not have reached that threshold, so we did not get that additional payout that we did the prior two years.
You will see revenue is a, it's a net number. They have a number of issues that they have to and can take care of ahead of time. For example, when they were building so many stores throughout the county, uh, updating those, there was less net revenue to distribute. They, they discontinued that, the revenue went back up, but then again, it went back down issue, so.
That's a real gift, though, that we give to Black Crowe's, certainly. I'll look at that that way. I'll look.
I'll get you the information that you asked for, and.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good morning. I have the privilege of starting out the review of our development of FY twenty-six budget. Um, as Tony and Jennifer also said, we would like to have feedback from council at any time during the presentations that you see henceforward. Staff will also be asking you for some feedback specifically, so we can make sure that the budget we bring to you in May is aligned with your preferences. So I want to start out with, we can get the presentation up. I want to start out with, uh, just a review of FY twenty-five financial status. The budget gets adopted at three hundred and two million dollars. You can see on the, um, left side in the operating funds, we have the general fund that made up a hundred and forty-nine million of that, which is forty-nine percent of the total budget. The capital projects, which is on the low, the lower right, made up eleven percent of the total budget at thirty-three million. Next several slides, um, we're going to go through the major budget categories and just remind council and people who are present that the city does, we have, um, revenue delays as we go through the budget process. Property taxes collected generally between December and January of each fiscal year. It makes up about fifty-eight percent of the general fund revenue. The last reappraisal was in January of twenty-one, which impacted FY twenty-two. The next reappraisal is January of twenty-five, which impacts FY twenty-six, the budget that we are developing. The split between property tax levy goes to the general fund as well as the debt service fund. And every year, we don't get our first estimate until February of, and mid-Fbruary technically of each year. So everything that we do from this point forward is an estimate until we get, start getting that from the county. Um, during a reappraisal year, we, it's important to understand what net neutral is. Um, when considering net neutral, it's a rate that generates the exact same revenue as the current fiscal year. It's important because it provides citizens a benchmark of, of what the tax rate is and if there is any post-tax increase during that fiscal year. So by law, we have to actually state the revenue neutral amount. And then if we do anything above that, we have to also state what we're doing. It's so, so the citizens can see what's happening. In this calculation, however, we do get to apply a revenue growth rate um, based on the years since the last reappraisal. And so that was in FY twenty-two, so we, the average increase is going to be two point five one percent, though we will be able to add to that. Sales tax is collected monthly, but it has a three and a half month delay. As Jennifer stated, our first one did come in, it's in July sale, and we don't get that until October fifteenth. That July sale was three percent higher than the same time last year, so that's a good sign. Presently, um, or I'm sorry, this is the second largest revenue that we have. It makes up about thirty-five percent of the general fund revenue. And this is distributed by the ad valorem percentage instead of the population. The county gets to choose which method they do and they choose the ad valorem. Um, as Jennifer stated, it's about twenty-six percent and seventy percent for the county.
The revenue growth rate, back one slide. How is that growth rate, is that just, uh, whenever the valuation increases?
Yes, it's a year-over-year growth and then you can take the average of that.
So year-over, it's just not about, it's a valuation growth, so.
The value, the assessed value.
Twenty-two to twenty-five, whatever the assessed value differences, that, that percentages are, is our rate.
Annualized, yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That, the county, it was based on the average eight and ad valorem, what does that mean?
The percentage, sorry, yeah, the percentage of ad valorem. So every jurisdiction in New Hanover County adopts property tax levy. That levy creates a certain amount of money and they take the percentage that it creates in totality and gives them the same amount of the sales tax that is collected.
So in simple terms, if it's, if it's based on population, which is closer to fifty-fifty, we get fifty percent of it. Since it's doing ad valorem, you're going to get twenty-six percent. Just, just to make it even clearer, if you raise your property tax, you get, I mean, if your ad valorem value goes up, but.
It changes the calculation, yes.
If you cut your property tax, take it on the chip.
It, it's also important to note that this includes all taxing districts in the county. So that will include fire tax, tax districts, the MSD, all of those are calculated in that ad valorem percentage.
So if we go on the MSD, we also get our percentage.
That is correct. And, um, just for sake of, um, data, you had said fifty-fifty. It actually comes out to be the ad valorem percentage now. If we do it by population, um, city would have thirty-three percent instead of the twenty-six and the county would go from seventy to sixty-four.
We're the only ones that. But, but the beaches are also.
The beaches benefit under the ad valorem.
The ad valorem process, yes.
Intergovernmental revenues are exactly as they suggest. They're, um, revenues that come from other jurisdictions that are government entities. Most of this funding is related to North Carolina franchise taxes, which is electric, natural gas, telecommunications and video programming. Those come in on a quarterly basis, uh, and this is the third largest revenue source at about thirteen percent of the general fund. So I want to go over a really early preliminary forecast for the upcoming budget year. And I just want to highlight that, um, as we go through, um, the development process in the month and we get, start getting the revenues, these are expected to change. The assumptions that we used, we use a two percent growth rate on the FY twenty-six assessed value. That is not the same as the net neutral percentage. That is the change from FY twenty-five's assessed value to the new assessed value that will come in. We picked two percent because the prior year was two percent. Sales tax, we estimated three percent over FY twenty-four's actual and then another three point five to five percent over that FY twenty-five year estimate. Other considerations, we're assuming we're not going to be using any fund balance. We lost the five hundred dollars from the convention center, which was a transfer to pay off the land. Um, we used that earlier this year. We are considering a potential loss in the interest. Um, we can keep it flat at the one point five, but it depends on what's happening in, at the federal government level and where that's going to be when we develop the budget. And then ABC revenues, we briefly touched upon that. I think it might be a correction, um, that is occurring based on COVID and we're, we could be going back to normal. I don't know, we have one data point, but that, we did lose a million dollars. So you're going to see that we might have to reduce that, um, revenue by about nine hundred thousand dollars.
Sorry, under other for the interests, tell me, sorry, what's the interest of what?
This is the interest on investments that Jennifer was calling.
Gotcha.
Yep.
But we have very little control over those investments anyway. I mean, we have to make the most conservative investments possible, regulate about state government. And my understanding was that we really didn't calculate that as a revenue source in general.
We do calculate it, it can drop significantly, but it's there, it goes with the economic cycle. So I like to use it for one-time items in theory, because you may not have it the following year. But this particular two years running has been beyond what anyone could have imagined.
Okay, thank you.
On the expenditure side, this is the base budget. We go in and remove one-time items. This is the cars, any computers, anything that we had, um, funded for one time. I also went in and I put some items that I know that we needed. So MOUs, contractual obligations, so the stormwater impervious surface, we know that goes up every year, that the city has to pay. Transit, um, items like that in large contracts, the axon, um, for police, the in-car cameras, as well as the tasers from the year prior, those go up in costs. And so those are included. So where does that leave us? That leaves the general fund, um, expected to have revenue increase of about two to four point six percent. Over, that's over FY twenty-five zero in testament. Property tax, we are estimating it to go up about two point five percent. That will depend on what the actual estimates will be for FY twenty-six base, um, that we will get in February. This next slide is just to show you the consistency of property tax. Um, those blue bullets are the assessed values, um, in the city. The yellow is what levy is brought in, and the very bottom is the tax rate. Um, it's pretty consistent between one point five and three percent. We usually fall in the middle every year. And then any other, any other revenue that you need really has to come from a tax increase. Sales tax, we're projecting a three point five to five percent. This is the one that most likely will change significantly, because we only have that one data point. Um, and we were watching and we, it, it's consistent with consumer, um, confidence as well as the economy. And in our area, we also have all of those hurricanes that you don't plan for, but it does spike the sales tax that you get in, because they have to do recovery on, and repairs on their houses or whatever else was impacted. So the three point five in the five, I just want to point out, is more in line with what we budgeted pre-Florence. Um, and that comes from an estimate with the state, we're usually about two percent higher than the state because of our location, and that's how we typically budget. So our preliminary estimates forecast for the general fund, we are, um, currently expecting the revenue to be about a hundred and forty-nine point eight million to a hundred and fifty-three point six million expenditures. You can see right now at the base with no enhancements, um, one hundred and forty-seven point nine. That gives us a surplus, um, for the needs of the city at one point eight to five point six million dollars. That's right. We don't have compensation, we don't have the retirement from the state that might have to come in. There's some probably known ones that I can't calculate yet, that aren't in there. And then any requests from the departments are not in there. That's literally the base strip.
We approach in rates.
Nothing like that.
Okay.
So the, um, FY twenty-six direction, the rest of the day, you will have various topics that you can see on the screen. We will go through compensation, um, a cost recovery, uh, outside agency process and the like. And we're going to ask council for some feedback, um, if you, if you are willing, and then providing feedback on a direction, so in May we can bring you a balanced budget. So the next steps are to go through those, um, FY twenty-six related items that we think are important and will influence the budget. We will continue to review, um, the revenues as we develop this budget and come to you with what we believe is going to be the best estimates come May. And we're going to work with departments to find creative ways to use their current allocation, um, innovatively. Maybe share resources, look at what the needs are, um, shift the way we do services. That's our plan. And we will ask you at the end of this, if that's the right direction, because we want to align the budget with what we're, with what you want as well.
With, uh, with us moving to this building, doesn't it make it easier for departments to share?
Our operating, um, departments are not necessarily in this. We do have the admin that we can share resources, but parks and recs, stormwater, um, those are outside of this building. Fire, police.
Ten-year history, taxable assessed values, tax. Uh, so the, the bottom numbers, the point four eight, one four eight four, one four nine eight four, seventeen. Estimated, that's the tax rate for that respective year, correct?
That's correct.
Why are we showing point four two two one for twenty-six?
Because I can calculate the net neutral based on the two percent projection for twenty-six base and the two point five percent for the growth. So that's just, it's an estimated calculation, it will change. And that just helps us give you that.
Typical rebound, where you're dropping that tax rate down.
You can drop it down.
If the net, if, I mean, if the net neutral is required.
That's right.
It's pretty significant.
Yeah.
Valuation increases, obviously, we'll see higher than two percent.
I'm not sure.
I, I think you're absolutely correct, but again, that, that true number will.
That point four two two one is based on a two percent.
That is correct. And I won't know what that is until February, and that's just the first assumption, and they give it, give us one every year, or one every month, I'm sorry, thereafter.
So by February, once the, once the valuations come out, it's about our third budget work session. We should have a much fuller picture of what type of tax rate we're looking at.
Right, it doesn't change too much, but it has changed by maybe a hundred and two hundred thousand dollars. But mostly it's around forty thousand dollars that we don't change in the budget, give or take.
Sorry, I'm not following that.
So the February, um, assessed value is pretty close to being solid. They go through appeals, but then marches may be a little bit different.
So you're saying we'll be pretty close on what the valuation is.
Yes, yep. You're welcome. The next presentation.
The expected contracted discussion, would you like to take a break before this?
All right. What was yours, Ray? Okay, appreciate that. Good morning. I know we have a lot of staff that's concerned about pay and, and some of them are here in the room today. And, and so my job today is to present to you the day that you guys asked for, um, regarding pay and benefits for our police, fire, public works and parks employees. But most importantly, as Tony mentioned, um, when his opening remarks, he'd likes to get a common understanding from council about what our compen- compensation philosophy is or what it should be. I will show you what our current philosophy is based on direction from previous councils. But, uh, we, really helping for us to understand what this council wants in terms of the direction, the goals with the compensation philosophy. So what I want to start out with is just talk about the citywide turnover. Um, and we ended FY twenty-four with a fifteen point eight percent turnover rate. And we ended FY twenty four with a 15.8% turnover rate. That's just slightly higher than where we ended up last year. Over the last five years, our turnover has averaged around 15%. When you look at why people are leaving, we've grouped them into three categories, retirement, voluntary, meaning they left on their own terms and involuntarily, meaning that they had some policy violation or performance issues and we had to let that individual go. If you look at the far right column, which is FY twenty four, you will see that almost 80% of the people left our organization on their own terms. This is the highest it's been in the last five years. Thirteen point one percent were retirements. This is actually the lowest number of retirements we've had over the last five years. And again, this could be signs that our baby boomers have left the workforce or most of them left the workforce. Seven point one percent were involuntary separations. When you look at new hires, promotions, determinations, in FY twenty four, we hired 181 employees. That's a 2.3% increase from the previous year. Promotions, those were up by 8.2% from the previous year. And you'll, that number includes also police trainees and firefighter trainees that promote up the firefighter and also police and fire within the ranks. And again, there, most of their promotions are all done internally. And then we'll look at, when you look at terminations, our terminations are up by five and a half percent from the previous year, 172. But on a positive note, you'll see that we hired more people than we've lost. When you look at our departmental vacancy rates across the organization, the city as a whole of the far right, you'll see we have 112 vacancies. This is a snapshot in time. So I guarantee this number's already changed. We pulled this data three weeks ago. So the citywide vacancy rate hundred, it's at nine point three percent. And put this into context, last May, June, this vacancy rate was over 11%, just over 11%. We had 133 vacancies. So we've done a lot of hiring this summer to bring that down under 10%, which is a good trend. Going to the left, you'll notice the fire vacancy rate looks like it's doing well. It is, but the reality is different when you talk about the number of people we have in the academy, the number of vacancies they have today on the line. So I'll talk about that in more detail in the previous slide. Yes, sir.
Sorry to interrupt. So on this vacancy rate, I said, are these, so it's eight, like, let's say, the public works, for instance, 18.5%. That is, that's the total departmental number?
That's correct.
It's kind of tough. How many total, total employees are in public works?
I believe I have that on.
Thank you. 175 in public works and then how many are in like WPD?
Three sixty.
Okay. I mean, it'd be helpful for me just to know like how many total positions are in each of these because the percentages can kind of, I mean, kind of skew numbers if you've got a really small department.
Right, that's right. And for example, planning and development, you know, it's a smaller department.
But it's showing really high on this graph.
That's absolutely.
Really not apples to apples.
That's correct. Yes. And I can, we'll get you a graph that has the vacancies and the number of budgeted positions.
The number of budgeted positions on the bottom.
Yeah.
And that's really clear.
Will we see this again in future voting sessions?
Absolutely.
Could that be, I mean, could that be plugged in those things that you just mentioned?
Yeah, yes.
Well, how about real quick, I mean, if you don't mind, again, sorry, but like how many positions are in fire?
Two, three. Two hundred and thirty seven.
Two hundred and thirty seven, WPD.
Three sixty.
Three sixty.
Hundred and seven.
One oh seven.
Excluding golf.
Are those, are those taken into the percentage account here?
Yes, that we grew golf into parks and rec.
So what's it got out there about ten?
Well. Public works again, sorry, 175.
Twenty or sixty five.
Sixty five. Planning, development. General government.
That's a whole.
We have to add all that up.
Yeah, that includes HR, finance, IT.
So that doesn't take into account any of the previous departments. This is just.
That's the smaller ones that we.
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Sorry. When you look at police and fire turnover, this is looking specifically just at sworn turnover in uniform fire. So fires up the red and then police is the blue. You can look at fire, they're under the citywide turnover average, but they're at 11.5%, which is the highest it's been in the last five years. Police, they're at 11.4%, lower than the city average. They've averaged around 12% over the last five years and fires average just under 10% the last five years. So why are people leaving? Mostly for another job. You know, it could be, you can see we've lost, last year, we've lost 17 individuals to another job. I will say we've lost four officers since January to the town of Leland. They're leaving for smaller beach towns and many decide to leave because there's less call volume and they can get paid more. So that's, that's a concern for, for us as a city that we got to keep, be mindful of. Others leave for federal state agencies and then you can see we've lost eight to retirements. You look at fire, again, most of them are leaving for another job as well, just like police, they're going for smaller beach towns. We've lost staff this year to Surf City, Carolina Beach and Concord. Also losing them to retirements, lost five. And then people just decide, you know, fire service and same with police, it's not for them, it's just a complete career change. But to get back to Councilman Wondell's question earlier about that $400,000 just under separation payout, most of that is for retirements. And when, when an employee retires, they'll pay out all their vacation and, and the ones that are eligible, their sick leave. And that's can be a pretty sizable number, especially if they've been here a long time and their salaries at the higher end. So that was 13 retirements for public safety, but there were 69 total separations last year that account for that $400,000 number. All right. So looking at the police and fire vacancy rates, again, this is a snapshot in time. This has already changed, I can tell you that right now. First, I'm going to show fire. It's showing 30 vacancies when you look at all the various ranks. However, they do have 27 individuals in fire academy. That's now 26. So when you take that into consideration, the true vacancy is three, although now it's four. Like I said, today, there's 30 holes and they're having to fill those and do, you know, work a lot of overtime to make sure that the work's still getting done.
Yes, sir. I remember one time we talked something about, like a lot of times people get trained here and then they leave. How, how does that relate to that, that said, that point seven?
In terms of first year turnover?
Yeah.
I don't have that information in front of me, but I can certainly get that to you. We'll make sure we follow up and get you the first year turnover in police and fire.
And there's no way we can train them in, or is there a way we can train them and then they work a couple of years before they?
No, we, we've, that's a legal question for legal. We have them sign, sign some kind of contract with us. The best practice is to give them some incentive to stay, whether it be, and I'll get to this later in presentation, some periodic milestones where they get automatic salary increases. And so we'll, I'll get to that in a little bit.
Okay.
When you look at police, like they have 37 vacancies, it's showing, that number is actually less, the chief will say today. We have 13 in the academy. And again, it takes about six months to get a firefighter and a police officer through the academy and then takes, you know, months after that to get them fully trained and competent in their position. I will, as of today, the chief emailed me this last night, there are 17 true vacancies they have in the department. When you take into account not only the funds that are in the academy, but also the conditional offers that they have out there, which are five.
Can you elaborate on additional offer?
Sure. Those are people that have made it through our recruitment process and we've extended an offer and they're just going through that pre-employment process, whether it's waiting on a, a drug screen, a polygraph or a physical.
So remember that you just said you got to be placed number 24 at the bottom.
Yes, sir. That's correct. Yes, sir. Yeah. Okay. So I'm going to look next, public works and parks turnover. Start with parks, that's that purple graph there. FY twenty four, they were 21.8% turnover. They've averaged around 21% the last four years. And then when you look at public works, they're at almost 30%, which is the highest it's been in the last five years. I will say that this council put forward some money to a step or introduce a career ladder in public works and we've started to see some impact, some positive impacts from that. Applications are flowing in and I'll get to that here in a minute. So when you look at public works reasons for leaving, just like police and fire, mostly for another job. I'll give you an example. We lost a great employee in our stormwater department, went to go do the same job for more money in the town of Leland. Other employees leave to go work in the private sector, whether it be construction or doing long, long haul trucking. Next, we'll look at parks and rec reasons for leaving, similarly, mostly for other, other job. And again, a lot of these employees in our entry level positions, they live paycheck to paycheck. And so it's not uncommon for them to find other opportunities that pay more and they decide to leave the city to go pursue those. Next, I'll look at public works vacancy rate. You can see compared to the city, they are much higher at 18.5% with 33 vacancies. The bulk of those, as I said, are in public works operator one with 11. Again, public works just implemented a career ladder program, public works operator one, two, three and four. We posted those as of July. We've already received 88 applications, 54 of those have been referred over to the department. He's got several, that are five candidates awaiting offers already. So we're starting to make progress, which is, which is a good sign in public works. But still, we need to be mindful that again, these are some of our lowest paid employees. We've got to make sure that our pay is competitive for them. Parks, vacancies are scattered throughout the department and parks, trees and recreation. I will say we have made some progress in parks with regards to grounds technician, that's their entry level position. We've hired for a grounds tech since July. So we've reduced that number, but you will see that's, you know, they have, most people leave for another job. And again, you'll see that the grounds tech specifically later in the presentation, that their pay is considerably lower than our benchmarks. So we'll get to that. Next slide. So here are just some, some, some strategies that staff have been using to recruit and retain talent. If you recall, last year, we did a benefits evaluation. Staff have been meeting and working to come up with recommendations that we can put forward in this year's budget to start making our benefits more competitive. We did a compensation study at your direction and we'll present the results of that today. We've attended many career fairs around the community and around the region. We're reviewing our job descriptions and requirements. There are some job descriptions that have legacy requirements, like requiring high school diplomas or degrees that aren't really necessary for the job. And so we're removing those and replacing them with language. In lieu of education, you can have experience in lieu of that education, which is helping us expand our applicant pool, which is good. Our CDL training program in public works, last year, we trained eight employees that received their CDL, which is awesome. That helps us fill holes in recycling trash, stormwater streets. Currently, we have one employee that has their permit and we got, I think, three others that are waiting to get their permit as of right now. We continue doing training and developments with staff. That's real important. Career progression, I talked about public works, we implemented that career ladder. We also implemented something similar in planning with planners one and two. And then we're also, we've this summer done sign on bonuses and referral bonuses and parks and landscape as well as public works to attract applicants to apply and then come work for the city. This next slide is, is just a reminder to council and to staff, but thank you more to council for your continued investment in our workforce. I know this is important to you. You don't bat an eye every year, you prioritize our employees and compensation. You know, FY twenty three is when kind of salaries went crazy with COVID inflation and you guys invested seven and a half million dollars that year for some pretty substantial increases. And every year after, after that, you've continued to rate, increase our ranges. So over the last two years, our ranges, all of our ranges have moved at least 5%, which has been great. We've been able to increase our starting pay, but as I'll get to in a moment, this unfortunately hasn't been enough and we've, we're still behind and I'll talk about that in a moment. So our compensation over the years, council's previous direction was to pay the market median or 50th percentile. And what that means is if you look at that graph up there, this is purely for illustrative purposes only. These numbers are just, I threw them up there just to kind of demonstrate what the market median is. So that market median, it's that middle number of that data set, so that 51,000 number. It, the reason that in compensation, we use the median as opposed to averages is that if you have an average, they're, the, the higher end and lower end can skew that data set, as Tony mentioned in his open remarks. So the median is a better indicator of that central tendency where that actual median is. So we've, we've been using that over the last several years. Another important thing that we've been doing each year, if you saw the previous slide, there's been a merit budget. So we, we believe in recognizing employees for their performance. Another thing that we've been, that you've given us direction is to study your overall competitiveness because you've heard from employees, we have as well, that our employee, our benefits are not as competitive as some of our other benchmarks. So our compensation philosophy as it is today, and again, if council has questions or you guys would like to go in a different direction, staff is here to listen and we will take your lead on this. Our market competitiveness, again, we want to maintain a compensation structure that aligns with the market median, that 50th percentile. That can be within 5%, so that's 5% above or below that number. We want to maintain transparency and equity to ensure that our compensation practices are understandable by our, our employees and they're consistent across departments. We want to continue to recognize the importance of rewarding strong performance and contributions of our employees through a merit process. And we al, we also want to make sure we have comprehensive benefits that are, that are competitive and affordable for employees. And we want to do all this with recognizing that we're stewards of public funds. And so we got to balance the competitiveness of our compensation with the fiscal responsibility that we have with the public. And lastly, this is most important, since COVID, we have been doing studies every year because salaries continue to change and it's something that we're going to have to stay after. A lot of our focus over the last couple of years has been on those positions that we're seeing high turnover or positions that are hard to fill. So that's going to be continual thing for us going forward.
We have, we're all conscious using pure cities to compare ourselves with a whole range of things. And we do that with pay. Is town listed as one of our pure cities?
I'll get to that. Yes, sir, they are. Yep. So that brings us to the FY twenty five comp study at the direction of the mayor on August 5th. You guys directed us to review the overall competitiveness of our police, you know, for fire, public works and parks positions. Because again, since 2021, salaries continue to rise and the fighting organizations like town Leland fighting for scarce labor and they continue to outpace us in wage growth. So this gets to your question, Councilman Ribeiro, looking at our labor market benchmarks. One of the first things after that August 5th meeting was I went to Mary and Tony and I said, all right, let's talk about what our benchmarks are truly going to be because they, they vary from year to year and we want to make sure that we have a baseline going forward that we can compare ourselves to year after year. And so we chose the benchmarks, which I'll talk about next, based on similarity of agencies in terms of size and service. So you'll see a lot of, we chose some of the top 12 cities in the state. Most of our employees don't leave to go to Raleigh and Charlotte, Greensboro. Most of them leave for other local beach towns. And so we wanted to make sure we included all of those municipalities that are within southeast North Carolina. And so you can see on the next slide, the benchmarks that we have on the left, the statewide municipal benchmarks from Greensboro down to Greenville. You'll notice that Charlotte and Raleigh are not on this list. Reality, they're not really good comparators because they're six to seven times the size of the city of Wilmington. And again, we're not losing employees to those areas. Also not on this list is Cary. Cary has always been an outlier. They are a leader in the entire state. They oftentimes will skew the data and we're also not losing employees to the town of Cary. So we've excluded them, but you will have the, to capture Wake County, you will see Durham up there. So we are still capturing that, that Raleigh Durham area with our data. And then when you look locally, we've got all of our local counties, our local municipalities. We've also included CFP UA on here because we've lost recently in engineering folks to CFP UA as well as some public works employees to CFP UA. So the analysis that we conducted was one, we, we sent a survey out and asked for them to send us their positions and associated pay ranges. And then my staff took. And then my staff took the painstaking job of going through each one of those job descriptions and matching them to, to job descriptions here we have at the city. Then we calculated the median compensation for the minimum midpoint and maximum, and I'm going to go through the data here in just a second. Also, in the survey that we asked, we asked for a litany of things because, again, we wanted to make sure we were comparing apples to apples. Because there's a lot of variations in pay and benefits when you're talking about different municipalities. And so some of the things we asked for was, you know, how much paid vacation sickly do they have? Do they pay into social security? Because our police and fire do not pay into social security. Do they offer retiring medical coverage, longevity pay, education incentives? One of the most important things that we've heard is what's their cost of employee only medical? And so you'll see in a moment, we've asked for them to give us the lowest plan that they have costs for employees, and we've compared that against ours.
Does anybody ever call us and ask us a question?
Yes, we get asked the questions all the time. So let's look at police first. I've, I've got it into three categories again, so the purple on the left, that's your minimum. And you can see the COW men, that's what we pay, that's what our minimum is for our range. And then you can see the benchmark median minimum, so that's what the benchmark minimum is. And you can see it's fifty one thousand six hundred twenty eight dollars for our police officers. So our starting pay for police officers is six point two percent behind that market median. When you go over to the midpoint, you can see we're three percent behind the market median. And you go all the way to the right, to the maximum of the range, we're only one point two percent off. So it, it looks like from the data that our, our starting ranges are about seven and a half percent off. And our midpoint is more in line with the market, only three and a half, three percent off, and our max is even better. One of the things I want to point out here is our spread, Wilmington's spread is sixty percent. When I talk about a spread, that's the difference between the minimum of the grade to the maximum of the grade. Most of our benchmarks have a spread of between fifty and fifty five percent. So you'll see one of our recommendations is we want to align ourselves with that benchmark median and then adjust our spreads. And that's going to put us right in line with the benchmark median for our minimum midpoint maximums.
And this goes to more macro conversation about transparency that I'll kind of bring up later. But I just, I'm not seeing that anywhere in slides, I know we're looking at mid, men, minimum, middle and maximum. But what about one of our benchmarks that are utilized in the step plan that's very transparent in their, in their progression of their career?
I'll get to that, I'll, I'll get to that, and, and the municipalities that have step plans, their data is, is in here because they still have a minimum and a maximum. And they have steps obviously between the minimum and maximum.
You'll touch on how many?
Yes, I will, yes, sir. So next, we'll look at police officer starting, starting pay, so this is our police officer's starting pay. Compared to all of our benchmarks, you see we're in that lower quartile, forty six thousand six hundred fifteen dollars starting pay. And then when you look at our local benchmarks, we're more closer to that, that median for locally. But then when you look at our top cities, unfortunately, the city is dead last in terms of starting pay for police. When you look.
I want to clarify on top cities.
Yes.
To your point earlier, these are top cities by population or by salary? Because I know you.
Population.
But you excluded Charlotte and Raleigh.
So when you look at police officer total compensation, so what we did, we took the police officer starting pay, we added the deferred compensation that we give employees, this is automatic money that we give to a 401K, 457. For police, all of this goes into 401K, that's nine and a half percent that they receive goes into 401K. You'll notice that no other municipality gives as much deferred comp as we do, so that's, we actually have an advantage with that program. But then when you flip over to the premium, medical premium, we have the most highest insurance premium amongst all of our benchmarks. The ones that you see are blank, those municipalities have a free plan for their employees, it doesn't cost them anything for employee only coverage. So you can see even with the deferred comp and the benefits, our police starting pay is still in that bottom quartile there. When we move on to fire, you'll notice.
You, a few slides ago, you said that, well, I don't know, maybe I missed heard you, but you said starting pay for police is forty six, but the slide says forty eight six.
Oh, yes, sir, you're, you're correct about that, that's, that, that is a typo. It was a forty, no, it's forty eight.
It's forty eight.
Oh, it is forty eight, sorry, yeah, I misspoke about that, thank you.
You also said that we come in dead last and starting pay?
When you look at our top cities, the top twelve cities, North Carolina, we're last in pay, at forty eight thousand, yes, sir.
Okay, 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 yeah. So, but compared, all right, go ahead.
So when you look at fire, our firefighter starting pay is forty five thousand eight hundred ninety three dollars. We are four point four percent off the starting pay at that benchmark minimum. In terms of the midpoint, we're pretty much spot on with the benchmark median. And the max, again, we're just two percent off there. But you'll notice that when you get to the upper ranks is where we find ourselves more out of line with the benchmark in terms of the minimum midpoint maximum. The spread, just like police, our spread between the minimum and maximum for our, our ranks is sixty percent. Whereas most municipalities have theirs between fifty and fifty five percent. And so again, if we adjust those spreads and, and adjust and match the benchmark median, we'll be right in line with our ranges. So looking firefight, for fire, we are, in terms of all of our benchmarks, we're just below the benchmark median for starting pay, High Point is actually the median in this data set. Locally, it looks like we're doing good, but it's very deceiving because you'll notice our starting pay is forty six, the next one is Leland at fifty two. That's about six thousand dollar difference, and like I said, we're losing police officers and firefighters to these beach towns. And then when you compare ourselves to the top cities, we're sitting there, you know, almost middle of the pack at the median again. Total compensation for fire, again, right, right in the middle there, forty five, about forty six thousand starting pay. Fire gets ten and a half percent deferred compensation, which again is higher than any of the benchmarks that, that we have, which is a great benefit, that's a competitive advantage that we have at the city. Again, when you took the benefits in, in consideration, you know, it comes out to total comp just under fifty thousand dollars, which is right around the, the median of, of our benchmarks there.
Is that deferred comp, the discussion that we had at the last council meeting that we were potentially amending?
Yes, the, the, in terms of the ten and a half percent, that's not going the way, just in terms of where we direct the four and a half percent of that, ten and a half percent is what we discussed. Yes, sir, that's correct.
Well, Clayton, let me ask another question really quick. Who negotiates the insurance benefits for the city of Wilmington?
Who negotiates the benefits? So each year, basically, we're self insured as an organization, and so we look at our claims trend. And based on our trend, we, you know, make adjustments to the premiums our employees pay because the city has the bulk of the share of the premiums, which is around seventy percent. And then employees pay thirty percent of that, and so we adjust our costs based on the trend in terms of increase in medical expenses. And we've trended around, I believe, eight percent over the last couple of years in terms of our medical expenses. But we've been very fortunate over the last couple of years, even though our medical expenses have gone up, we've been able to absorb some of those costs and not pass them on to our employees, so our premiums have remained flat for at least the last two, three years, I believe. So, but from time to time, because we are self sure, we will bid out our insurance. Because we, to, for a third party administrator to administer our claims for us. And there are admin fees associated with the TPA, and that's where you can have some savings. And so we're almost at that point now, we're going to need to bid out our health insurance to, to make sure that we're getting competitive pricing in terms of our administration. Our plan.
The other thing that I will say this, just as a caveat, when you look at a slide like this, our insurance is often, if you recall the study we did last year, it showed that. But it's not as simple as looking at this because behind insurance is also what that insurance includes. In terms of your out of pocket max, how much you're paying in co pays. So some municipalities may show that an employee is paying nothing, but their out of pocket max could be five, six thousand dollars, which is double ours. So you also have to look at plan design as well, because there's a lot of municipalities across the state that do zero, but their plan design isn't as generous as ours, for example. And so when we did the study last year, that was also a part of what we looked at is plan design. Because it's not as easy as the numbers, because everyone on that board has a different plan design. And what that means is what the actual out of pocket for an employee may be. So I just wanted to caveat that while we look horrible in terms of that number, there's more to it in terms of what the design actually behind it is.
That's a great point for you to make, Mary, and our, are we getting that information out to employees?
We are, sir, but part of it is that we did, when the study last year, we are still out of, out of, out of, out of comparison with our peers. One of the things Clayton mentioned is our call share is seventy thirty. A, a lot of places are looking at eighty twenty, so you'll see later in the presentation a conversation about that.
Okay.
We have a benefits group that does look at those plan designs, but as a catch twenty two, you can reduce the amount an employee pays in, but they're going to pay out of pocket if they actually go to the doctor. So it's a balancing act of trying to figure out the difference between pa, plan design and what an employee pays in.
And one of the things the mayor will remember this, and perhaps Charlie. Several years ago, council put together a, a small subcommittee and worked with staff to determine what we were paying in terms of a percentage of employee premium, as well as the benefits that were supplied, were supplied through the plan. And essentially came back and ratified what, what we are now using as an existing model, which is the percentage of thirty percent. And then the benefits have remained relatively stable as well. But again, we are looking at both of those for potential tweaks during the budget process.
Understood, I, I'm just saying, I, I'm just looking to see how we. If we're concerned about paying what our employees are paying home, but then, you know, there, the incentive, you know, if your insurance premium is, is high, oh, I mean, that's, that's a double negative. To me, because you may be able to keep more employees if, you know, the incentives are sweeter compared to other municipalities, but if they can get more pay and better benefits, hell, I'd leave too.
That's, that's, that's a great point, Councilman Spears, and I will say, we have, employees have turned offers down because our benefits aren't competitive, they look at it like, well, I can't, I can't make this work, I got a better deal while I'm at it, so we, we have lost offers because of this.
Cleveland tries to recruit me, I'll jump over there too.
All right, so this is getting to some of the other benchmark results that we looked at. In terms of retirement medical, as you may recall, or if we don't, don't know, the city stopped offering retiring medical to new hires back in twenty eleven, so anyone that's hired today or post since twenty eleven on are not eligible for retirement medical, so.
What was the driving force behind that?
Particularly, particularly at the time, when we were paying retiring medical. Retiring medical was by far the most expensive cost, and then honestly, at the time, retiring medical spousal benefits were costing us more than.
If it was just offered and they pay everything.
Hundred percent of the cost?
Some, is there some hidden ground there?
We could see if there's a savings to them, I mean, and some of the other piece to that, that the same manager mentioned is back in the day. Jennifer, was it that year that we had to change the way we were, so a lot of municipalities went away from retirement benefits back then because you had to put it in your books as a long term liability. So the minute you cover somebody in retirement and say I'm giving you retirement in the future, you actually have to show that liability on your books now. And that changed, I'm looking at you, Jennifer, was that back then?
Probably around two thousand ten, same thing changed, because a lot of municipalities at that point ended their retiree health insurance benefits. And so the push since then from the state treasurer's office is to fund that liability. So that's the offset, not only do you show that as a long term liability that takes away your value of your assets, but then they're pushing for you to fund that. So we do have a trust account where probably back at the same time, two thousand ten, two thousand twelve, the city did a refunding on one of its financings, and we were able to do an advanced refunding and put that money in a trust to help offset some of the retiree health insurance costs. But that is only about three million dollars of our liability. And so every year when we go to the, the local government commission to do issued debt, we're always faced with where are you at with funding your long term liability? And so, you know, that's, that's money that is put in a trust that can only be used for that purpose. But because we operate on a pay as you go basis with our health insurance and we ended it, you know, we're not looking to fund that, that full liability, but that is something, you know, we're showing because of that change with, with GAZB, you have to show that long term liability and it counts against you, it counts as long term debt that you have. And then they want to see how are you funding this, so that is a question we get every year from our rating agencies and the local government. Is what are you doing to fund this? And we've been able to show that we can afford on a pay as you go basis for our entity.
One of the things that was unusual about our plan, when I came here, I took advantage of it, and I no longer have to. But because I'm a boomer, this still on the job. But our, our plan offered, if you've had thirty years of service in the North Carolina local government retirement system, you could retire with, from the city and get the retirement benefits. Most of these offers for retirement medical that, that Clayton has got laid out here, say you have to serve thirty years with that particular entity. And it is unusual for folks to spend thirty years with a particular entity. Our police chief, our fire chief, some of our upper ranks of both a certain number of years. But prior to that, prior to our elimination, we allowed service in other communities to count towards.
So nobody employed by the city of Wilmington, nobody has any retirement insurance.
Unless you were employed prior to two thousand and ten.
Yes. Yes, sir.
It's that unusual, or it'd be difficult to just classify it for, in order to increase retention seems to be an issue. Classify it just for, you know, the first responders that have an apparently more, more dangerous job. And have that thirty, twenty, twenty, twenty five, thirty year number built into it to incentivize some retention, but also offer that benefit, you know, to them specifically.
There's, there's definitely, there's still some liability, obviously with that, we have to report and keep track of however, but I think there's some other things that the city could potentially look at doing. Appointed Durham, for example, they have an account, I think the firefighter association actually brought this to my attention. They have another account that the city can contribute money towards. And it's the employees' money, and when they retire, they can take that to pay, to go purchase their own plan in the marketplace and use those funds to pay for the insurance on a monthly basis. So that's something that the, we're going to, as a benefits committee, be looking at over next year as a, a creative way of, of for still providing money towards their medical expenses when they retire, but not funding it in future years and being held, you know, liable for that.
I, I think that, that goes back to a lot of change that we saw around two thousand eight, two thousand twelve, where they went from a defined benefit program to a defined contribution program. And we saw that a lot in the retirement system, our retirement system is still defined benefit, but a lot had gone to defined contribution. And so we may be able to do something where we offer somebody who's got twenty five, thirty years in a, an amount of money that they use to go towards some sort of.
You're just about to jump into, but can you, before you explain, who's offering longevity and who's offering step plans? Maybe just take them out and explain what longevity pay is and what step plans are.
Yeah, absolutely. So longevity is basically if you stay with an, an organization, an entity for predetermined amount of time. Usually it's milestones, like every five years you get a longevity payout. And so that's how it works, usually the payouts are minimal, it's about one percent of your salary, some municipalities up there offer just a couple hundred dollars. You know, every milestone that you hit, but you can see the municipalities up there that still do offer some level of longevity pay. Again, it's an incentive to, to get people to stay with the entity, so they hit those milestones and keep getting those payouts. When you look over to step plans, step plans, it's basically, you have ranges like we do, minimum and a maximum. Uh, minimum and a maximum, but um employees are placed on a step. Where so each employee that's hired in year one, they're all at step one. Every employee that has two years of service is at step two. And um each year that employee moves from step to step. Um, until they promote and they move go to the next range and they'll keep moving up the the ladder in terms of steps. Um, the city is not on a step plan, the city uses uh pay ranges and grades. Um, our employees move through the ranges uh through um market adjustments and through a merit pool. And so that's how our employees move uh through through the different grades. Um, on the slide, I want to provide, because there's some, there's a lot of variations in terms of step plans. Um, you'll notice that Asheville and Durham, uh, they have a step plan. They uh and and same with Pender, they're uh unique in that they do step plans for all ranks, so from entry level all the way up to battalion chief or deputy chief. Um, Fayetteville and Greensboro, they only do those entry level ranks, so usually your police officers, firefighters. Um, um Greensboro might do, I think, up to sergeant. Uh, but Fayetteville is definitely only those the the police officer and firefighter ranks, everyone else is just like, they're just like us in terms of. They got to move through merit. Leland, uh, we dug into that, that that is actually not a true step program. Um, Leland um brings employees in based on their experience and education, and so they have a chart that says if you have. You know, five years of experience and you got a bachelor's degree, we're going to place you here in our range. Um, but all their other ranks and their employees are subject to merit. Uh, through Leland. And then you can see all the other benchmarks over there, um, on the right hand side, they are not on uh step plans.
See, Pender County and Leland do both.
Oh, yes, longevity pay?
And step.
Yeah.
That's probably why they were asking for seven percent increase in their tax rate.
Could be. Yes. Okay.
Well, one of the things that I will call attention to, you may recall in the ad hoc, during the process of adoption of the budget, this this year's budget. We looked at a request from the fire department to put in an interim step between firefighter and master firefighter. Um, and that would have moved them up at two.
Three percent.
No, no, but how many years?
Of three years.
Three, three years would have given it to an interim step. We decided to delay that because we had so much compression in the upper ranks of the of the organization, we needed to use some of our merit money. To be able to adjust that compression upwards, so we could create some some flexibility on the bottom.
And so you'll see later in the presentation, one of our proposals or options for council that considers to adding that step into um our ranks. And so that will give employees uh an incentive to stay. Uh, once they graduate the academy, they get a bump, and after year three, they get an automatic bump. So I'll get to that here in just a moment, and that's how many of our um municipalities, um, they have that position that we don't have. So when you look at, um, I'll hear the recommendations, um, so. We've got four things, one is we want to shift our ranges to better align with that market median, because you saw we were we were off uh most of the um most of the ranks. We're going to adjust our spread from that sixty percent to the fifty to fifty five percent. And then we got to move our employees within the new ranges. And then we want to implement a career ladder from entry level to year three. And so I'll show you an example of that here on the slide here. Uh, so the two highlighted positions you see, senior police officer and senior firefighter, we do not have those today. Um, so there is no incentive, you know, at year three. Um, so we're recommending that we put this in place. Um, and it would work, becoming as a trainee, which is five percent less than the starting pay of an officer and firefighter. You automatically, once you get sworn in, automatically get a five percent bump. And then when you hit year three, you're automatically going to get another three percent bump. Um, and then employees are eligible for merit in between those years and then going forward. Um, and so again, this is a tool to retain new officers, they can see a clear path. Uh, with automatic increases after six months and again after year three.
This is like a quasi step.
Yes, it's some kind of medium.
Typically in a step plan, would you run through like sergeant with a captain?
So so usually you stop it, it, so hourly employees, usually you see steps through the hourly ranks, and then once you get to your exempt, more professional positions in in police and fire. That's where uh the ones that have steps stop and they do uh merit performance based.
So first we use our. Do not. First we use are people that um don't end right.
That's correct, they don't, they're entry level, they're learning on the job, yep.
And they stay at their entry level salary?
No, no, so.
They get a bump when they get sworn.
So each year, you know, each year when we do salary planning, if council approves a merit pool or a salary range adjustment. Those employees will be eligible for those adjustments, as well as their automatic five percent and three percent bump at those predetermined times.
Are we losing more people in the first two years?
I would say we are losing employees in the first three years, I don't know the numbers, and I will get that to council. Um, as a follow up, um, but as you know, that we spend thousands of dollars training in the best of these, and so. It's definitely something we need to to put um an incentive like this in place to help retain them.
Okay, question is, is that a good answer?
Not sure. We'll have to, if we do this, this is something we're going to have to monitor and see if it's made a difference. So when you look at the costs, um, there are two options that we priced out. One is just to adjust our ranges and spreads to align with the market median and adjusting our employees within those. Um, this does not include adding that senior firefighter officer position, that's two point two million, that's with salary and benefits, that's police and fire only. In that option one, police would see an average increase of about six percent, fire would see an average increase of about five percent amongst all the ranks. When you go to option two, when you adjust the ranges, again, we're going to match the market median, we're also going to implement that senior firefighter and uh police officer position. It's going to cost more, because what we have to do is we have to then adjust everyone above that firefighter rank, senior fighter rank, an additional three percent. Because what we don't want to have is create compression. And so that cost is three point one million dollars, police would see an average increase of eight percent. And if fire would see an average increase of seven percent, an option two.
Well, the cause is just as much heartburn, but people have been there four, five, six years, they have someone come in and and the compression kicks in. And and I would feel the same way, you know, there's a guy that's been on the job good for years, hell, he's making, you know. Almost what I am. So I I understand how it's a domino effect pushes things up, but.
Yeah.
But, you know, year after year after year after year, we could, you know, we could do this exercise. And the numbers stay the same with regard to. Losing people. And you just said it, we spend a great deal of money and a great deal of their their time training these folks. And, you know, you go, you can live in the same spot and to drive across the river to like seven or eight thousand dollars more. That doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure that out.
Right.
They're not looking down the road at that long term package. They're looking, hey, what can I, I need to tell you today, I got kids. Trying to buy a house, and that's what they're looking at, I mean, that's just, it's not a living wage. So and here, and I know we, the other thing that's pushing against it is the tax rate. You know, we don't want to raise taxes, we want to, you know, make it nice to everybody, but, I mean, police and fire. I mean, wow, that's where that's where it starts, I want to be safe, I want to do it, I got, have a heart attack or my house is on fire, I'm there. And it just, it seems inordinately unfair that we continue to do this every year, if we have to. You know, we bit the bullet five, six, seven years ago with seven million dollars. And woke up, you know, puffing our chest out, and here we are back again.
Yeah. Yeah, it's.
It's common.
It's very frustrating for staff, especially.
It's like, yeah, I know you got more sitting there thinking ways to turn the screw, I see that. You know, but we've we've got to come to realization and keep it this way. You know, we can't, we can't, it's just like value weighting our property, we used to wait eight years and shock hell at everybody. Now we do it every four years and we do a shock hell at everybody. So, you know, we've got to kind of do it in business practice, I believe you should say.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, we look at parks, streets and stormwater. Um. Looking at the grounds technician, this is what I spoke about earlier, that's an entry level position. Um, the grounds techs currently make uh sixteen fifty five an hour. And uh you can see we're almost ten percent below the market median, and many of our grounds techs start at that minimum salary. And so one of the recommendations you'll see in a couple of slides is to uh reclassify them to the next grade band up, which will bring us more in line with the market. Um, the reason there is blanks here for the senior grounds techs, we didn't have enough data, there was less than four uh benchmarks that had senior grounds tech positions. So with the data wasn't um wasn't accurate, so we didn't put it in here. Um, most of mid benchmarks just have one level of position for parks, they don't have uh senior grounds techs and grounds tech. Um, when you go down to field service worker, this is the career ladder that we just implemented. Uh, public works operator, one, two, three and four. And again, like I said, we've been seeing some success recently with this, thanks to council and funding this. Um, you can see we are uh behind um in some of those grades there. Um, staff's not going to be recommending that we make any adjustments at the present time. Uh, we will recommend that, you know, when we adjust our ranges. Um, as part of the new fiscal year, that this group is included in that, so we can continue to maintain competitiveness. Look at recycling and trash, um, RTS worker, this is an individual that works on the back of the recycling trash truck. Um, again, these are some of our lowest paid employees, it looks like we're paying, you know, above the the midpoint there or the the median there, which we are. Um, but again, a lot of municipalities have implemented more of a of a living wage, we want to make sure that we're offering employees competitive pay. And so we are going to be recommending that, we move them up like our grounds techs, because they're doing very similar work to the next grade up. Um, so you see that in just a second. Our operators, um, we're actually doing great, um, we've uh council two years ago adjusted our starting pay for operators. It was like sixteen or seventeen dollars up to twenty dollars an hour, made a huge difference, we updated even more this past year to twenty dollars and seventy cents, I think, an hour around abouts. So that's made a significant um improvement in recruitment and retention. Next, we'll look at our recommendations for public works and parks. Again, we're recommending uh that we were going to need to increase or reclassify our grounds technicians. Um, and our RTS workers uh from sixteen fifty five to seventeen thirty nine an hour, and you can see what that is annually. The cost estimates range from forty thousand to one hundred and fifteen thousand, the reasons for that. Hundred or forty thousand is just moving people to the new minimums. Hundred fifteen thousand is if we keep them where they are in today's ranges. In the new reclassified ranges, so they don't lose any ground where they're at in the ranges, so that's why that's that would be the higher end. And then again, no adjustments. So let's say, um, in my current pay band. Um, at the twenty fifth percentile on that pay band, I'm quarter of the way in. When I reclassify them to the pay band in the next grade. If I don't do anything with the pay, they're going to be back down here at the bottom, I want to keep them at the twenty fifth percentile, so I'm going to move them to that spot in the new band. And that's what's going to cost more money.
I understand, hundred fifteen thousand dollars.
Yeah. Okay. And that uh brings us to last couple of slides that we have here, we talked about employee benefits. Uh, we have been working with our broker, we got a new broker this past year. Um, he's helping us work with the benefits committee to develop recommendations that are going to reduce the health insurance premiums, and I'll talk about this in the next slide. We're also, one of the things, an easy win we see that's not going to cost much money, I'll you'll see in the next slide, is to contribute to our dental plan. Uh, many municipalities uh don't charge employees for dental, uh, they pay a portion of the the premiums, the city doesn't pay anything for dental, it's a hundred percent employee funded. Uh, and then we're also, again, as a previous discussion, studying other benefit options for employees not eligible for retiring medical insurance. And so when we look at the our kind of free year plan here, what we'd like to do this year is again, to reduce our medical premiums. And the cost you see here is if we reduce our employee only medical premiums by fifty dollars a month. That would be a six hundred dollar savings to our employees a year. Um, and it would put us our premiums more in line with our our uh benchmarks. The reason for such the wild swing in costs there is because the eight hundred thousand dollars, we'll talk about two million first. If we reduce our premiums and don't do anything to plan design. And with our eight percent trend, that's going to cost two million dollars. What I mean by plan design, Mary mentioned, if we don't adjust any co-pays, out of pockets, uh, maxes, deductibles, that's going to be two million dollars. If we make some tweaks to our plan, mean, we um maybe increase our out of pocket maximums for both plans or. Um, increase the co-pays by five or five or ten dollars. Then we can re offset some of those costs and bring it more down to that eight hundred thousand dollar number. And you can see when you talk about dental, if we contribute just fifty percent of the dental. The cost range from hundred and forty to two hundred thousand, hundred and forty is based on the number of employees that are enrolled in our our dental insurance today. If all of our employees take advantage of this and decide to enroll in dental because it's cheaper, that cost would be two hundred thousand dollars. So that we're looking at coming forward in FY twenty six with some recommendations to do those two items. In year, in the next couple of years, we want to continue to reduce that medical premium, we'd love to have a free option. Uh, for employee only, like many of our benchmarks have. Uh, we want to continue to see if we can increase the contributions in a plan to again have a free plan. And then we're going to review our medical plan design, we've had the PPO HSA for the last. This last decade, um, and there are some creative things out there in the benefit space that we can uh do and look at. That are not only going to save our employees money, but save the city money and reduce our costs, so we're going to be looking at those things heavily with our new broker. And then again, continue to bring back um an option uh for you guys to consider in terms of retirement uh medical supplement. So that's all the data and information I have uh to present today, I'm I'm happy to answer any questions. Um, again, we're here to get direction from council and just understand what it is you'd like us to uh to do and focus on next.
Yep, cost.
Yeah, yeah, so if you want to go back to a couple of slides, you can see for police and fire, that's the cost right there, it'd be two point two million. If we just adjust our ranges and spread to align with the market median. And then option two is if we want to implement that senior position, it'd be three point one million dollars.
That doesn't include the the.
No, the benefits are a whole nother.
That's a whole nother one, yep.
Yeah.
And how about with the park, the streets, stormwater, all those?
That's about, um, go back to that Laura once, one more, that'd be between about forty to a hundred fifteen thousand dollars.
About three point two, if we take option two, three point two.
And that's the adjustment.
Um, the adjustment.
If you did the three point two.
Three point two, so on on average, our our police would see, I think, eight percent increase and fire would be seven percent.
It's on.
And you did five percent this year.
Yeah, but this is just on average, so depending on where you were and with the movement, so this doesn't include any sort of merit or market adjustment. This is just to change the ranges and to create the senior. Uh, officer and senior firefighter. So in terms of the next budget, whatever we would do in terms of employee compensation would be in addition to this.
Has has there been any any discussion from police and fire to? Have a wish to extend that step program to corporal and sergeant and engineering lieutenant, do we know what the associated cost would be if we were to kind of, there's not?
No, we we don't have that ready, uh, I do know that that is an interest of police and fire uh to do that. Uh, if there are a lot of complexities, if we were to completely redesign our compensation uh program. Um, and it would take us time to, one, design the plan. And then the biggest challenge would be to fit our employees in an equitable way within those new ranges. And I do know uh municipalities that have implemented step programs, it comes with this pretty substantial cost um to do that. Um, but we can certainly, if that's a direction council wants us to look at, we can do that, again, it's going to take us some time. Uh, to to build that out and to determine what the cost would be once we place our employees in those steps.
Or police, and what we're going to do, from hourly to to salary?
Um, from, once you go from sergeant to lieutenant, so lieutenant is where you go to salary.
Okay, how about for fire?
Once you go from captain to battalion chief.
All right, thank you.
So Clay, we're talking right now, police, fire and parks, right? We're not talking about these other engineering plan?
We're not, and we're losing, like I said, we're losing engineers and and Dave Cow, I don't know if he's sitting around here, but. Um, he he's having a heck of a time recruiting PEs, people with PEs.
They're just as poor as anybody else.
Thank you, Dave.
They just sit next to us.
They are, yeah. And you you got uh planning as well, uh, trouble trouble attracting retaining planners. Um, so it's it's just not those areas, it's it's other areas in the organization that we also struggle with.
And and you calculated that.
We have not, uh, generally, what most municipalities, I think, what I've seen of budgeting for for next year is anywhere between a four and five percent salary budget. Um, across the organization.
But we would have to do the same analysis on those positions to determine where they are with regards to market. Before we apply that four to five percent.
Yeah.
Because if we say for five, for example, that uh planners are ten percent below market on starting pay. Because if we say for five, for example, that planners are ten percent below market on starting pay, then we'd have to make that adjustment in the four or five percent on top of it. The only reason I say that is we, we did this analysis last January, right? We put it into place in July and we were behind. Same thing's going to happen here. If we do this, whenever we do this, the day afterwards, we're going to be behind. And, and that's is in this, in this employment environment, labor market environment, you're going to see that spiral.
So what Tony's saying is if, if we do this today, you know, the option one or two, that's great. But in July, we're also going to need to add some adjustments to this because if not, we're going to be further behind in July. So we would really have to age this data forward in July. If we don't do this, if we don't do this now, this number is going to increase in July because again, we're going to want to increase it by at least two or three percent to account for the other adjustments that municipalities are doing around state.
So it's, it's a chase your tail kind of situation. Some people describe it as a vortex after too, prefer not to describe it as a vortex. To characterize it as chasing the tail. Well, I, I, I would, I, I don't want to, I don't want to prolong this discussion, but I want to make sure of two things. First of all, are we, have we properly identified the cohort? For comparisons. Because if, if you're going, if you're going to say, for example, that Kerry, Charlotte, Raleigh ought to be included in that cohort, that's going to change that number. We don't believe it needs to be in there because we haven't lost folks to there and they are most of Raleigh and Charlotte are two, three, four times larger than we are.
We have to benchmark ours.
That, that's, that, but I want to make sure that council's comfortable with the competitive.
Well, let me ask this question, Tony. Over the years, when we've seen this, we've seen other municipalities, organizations pick off higher cohorts. Is it the same group? It seems to be. And then I have to take into consideration the size of their departments. I mean, this, this probably is fifty, forty, fifty people. I know it's smaller. That to me is going to be the biggest competitor for us on boards. But we've always lost at the beaches, rice, we're kind of securing, USCW, the ports.
And, and I would, and I would argue that some folks are not the right fit. I know the chief told me, uh, police chief told me about a police officer who left because the call volume was too high for it. That may be what they want to base their decision on, and I don't know that we can do a whole lot to change that. But so I, but I just want to make sure that, that, yes, to answer your question, these are generally the groups to whom we lose employees. But I want to make sure I don't want to go forward and then hear, hear somebody come back and say, wait a minute, we want to expand the cohort because that's going to change the number. And then, um, yeah, the, the, yeah, thank you. Fifty percentile, the, uh, of those, of that cohort is where we have tried again to place ourselves because the extreme means are generally those. They, they are extremely low or extremely high. And so we've tried to use the, the median as a cohort, but I want to make sure the council's comfortable with that. As opposed to saying if we want to be at twenty-five percent or seventy.
When we did this, I think I assessed three, four years ago, we raised it, we made a lot of revenues. It's kind of like the incentive pay. Everybody around us is waiting to see what kind of adjustment we were going to make and determine how many people we were going to hire from them. So they had to make an adjustment to compete with us.
So, so this is what this is. Some competing agencies put electronic billboards out and okay. It's almost like sometimes these, these start and salaries are kind of, it's kind of like competitive. I mean, that's not the right word. It's like they go up, we go up. And all of a sudden, you know, we're not, it's not totally realistic anymore. We have to live with it. Well, a good example, a, a police chief again brought to me one day, it's been many months ago when we were playing forty-eight and, and came in and said, well, Rocky Mount's paying sixty thousand a year for starting salary. You know, there's no way we can compete with that. We really haven't lost anybody at Rocky Mount. But folks in the triangle area had to adjust because they had folks that were commuting from Raleigh to Rocky Mount to, to make those pay, to make, to get that pay.
So, so the question, and, and this is, this is a memory, someone indicated based on our total package that most of looking more toward that pay per se, and maybe not as much toward these overall compensation package. And you can reduce some of the compensation package downstream if you raise revenue or raise their salaries.
That, that can certainly be a trade-off. I will say though, once you give a benefit, it's very hard to take it away. Um, and so that could, you know, employees are going to see that.
I'd rather have the pay.
Yes.
Instead of having to make a contribution or whatever it is differently.
In terms of, uh, explain.
I don't know what the hell I'm going about. Without the, the big package, didn't have it phased in after year three, four, five percent or something like that, but it begins to mean more. Not that it doesn't mean a great deal to them on the get-go, but yeah, just trying to think of a way to get their, get their going in salary. So they don't want to do it. And, and then at the end of year three, or at their request, you know, some of them, you know, have other careers. And, uh, or, or their, their, maybe their spouse has good insurance package, maybe they teach school or something like that. I don't, I'm just guessing here, but just trying to be creative outside the box.
Yeah, that's what we need to do. It's just trying to be creative.
They're more than anybody.
Oh, they, oh, yes. Um, and another thing that.
I didn't mean that as. But they do. I mean, they live it.
And another thing to keep in mind is our employees have a mandatory six percent contribution that they have to make each paycheck towards the state retirement system. And so especially in like parks and public works, people live in paycheck, paycheck, that six percent is a lot of money come out of the check. And so they go work for the private sector, but they don't have to have that six percent come out. And so it's just a challenge that we have. Those don't. But it's a good benefit if you stay here long. It's a great benefit.
You, you said that you took something off the agenda today that you're going to push to January, some sort of exercise, is how you described it.
Just, we need, we need to talk about a general philosophy and is, to get beyond budget to budget to budget on this. And I know that y'all change every two years, so I, I understand that the, the philosophy could change. But we as a, I think we as a staff need a guiding principle on how we best address these issues. And, and, and I think that that's what we need to get at with regard to an exercise. What is important to you? What, what will be worth going up on the tax rate versus eliminating a particular service? We, we need to go through that kind of exercise.
Have you thought about what kind of service you would live in? I mean, I mean, you would leave that up to us to, to take that back, or, but is there a recommendation as to what service you would cut back off?
We, we do not have thought out recommendations. We have ideas that everybody floats and, and we wouldn't want to float those publicly.
As far as Clay said, what you give a service to take that service.
Absolutely. And I think a reduction in services is a more difficult decision to make than adding a service.
And at the same time, having an aging infrastructure in a little city like this and that and up to keep up the CIP is also a challenge.
But, but let me give you a good example. In the fire department, a few years back, well, it's been more than a few years back, I'm showing my age. Several years ago, when our safety manager changed, it's been what, ten years ago now, maybe? Safety was decentralized, was, was centralized in the human resources department. The then director made the decision to decentralize that. She made it unilaterally, but she made it nonetheless. And so what happened was the fire department took four captains at that time and put them, or captain on every shift and said, you have, you were going to be the safety officer. To do that, they eliminated something else that was going on with the fire department for the life. I mean, I can't remember what it was. But my point is that they reallocated that resource because that's what they needed the most. That's what we're encouraging staff to do this year. But again, based upon these numbers and based upon the early looks at revenue, there's going to be, there's going to be some elimination that's going to have to happen within the, within the departments. But it's only if, only if a department head feels, um, inclined to, to be innovative. And, and, and public work or public works has done it, fires and everybody's done it in one way or another, but that fire example is probably the easiest one to point to. Well, first of all, is the work correct? Is, is the faith philosophic correct? What do you want to, what do you want to do in terms of increases? Are we, are, are you inclined to, to make adjustments, trying to make adjustments mid-year out of front balance? Uh, and then compound that again in July with the increases or you won't, do you want to wait until July? If you wait until July, we can bring back the total compensation package for all one hundred percent employees as opposed to just sixty percent or so. Those are some of the questions that we're looking for answers to. What else about this?
I would like to see the, the step program increase to sergeant on the side and captain on the fire side. That's just a lot of the conversations that I'm hearing are that they transparency, knowing when they, when they move up in the organization, what, what that number is going to be. And that's, that's just standard life plan at that point here in the organization. And, and we can't tell them that. I understand the frustration is pretty nervous.
We will, we will, we will not be able to do that.
I, I understand. I still think it's part of the larger budget conversation. And then this is real, real matter really, but I think it's part of the larger, larger conversation. I would also like to just see your FTE increases that we've had over the last ten years.
So looking at page thirty-four, you have the option one, option two. You're saying this is our options for a mid-year increase.
That would be for today, yes, for public safety, police and fire. Yes, but if you, but, but I will say if you were to do a step plan, I would not recommend doing any of this now because those costs are just going to be even more.
So you can have the full step plan proposal ready in January?
No, I don't think so because again, it's very, it's, it's, it's very complex and we have to go, we have to make some decisions as, as, as the city in terms of how we're going to place employees in steps, whether it's years of service or time and grade. Um, and we have to, because right now, the way we pay employees, it's, uh, you know, they've moved through the ranges through performance and other adjustments. And so employees, based on their year of service or different parts of the step, and so we have to determine what's the most equitable way to move them onto a step plan. And that's going to take staff some time. I mean, Mary's had some experience doing this in Raleigh and, um, you know, she can talk to some of the challenges they have there, but.
You have to, you also have to decide how much you're going to put in between each grade. So is it two, three, four percent? Because remember, this is, this replaces then the merit proposal. So there's not increases in addition to this. And so I'll, I'll say I have experienced in Raleigh of, of mantling it and dismantling it because we also did away with it in Raleigh for a host of reasons. And so, but it is to, because there is a different value of time and position versus time of service. And so you have to go back to an employee's files to understand when they started, what those increases look like to understand the position on a step. Uh, and to do it in a way, because no matter what, someone's going to be unhappy. Because to your point, if I've been here longer, someone's making more money than me. Someone also is going to say, well, I'm a supervisor. I should be making more money than this person, but they've been here thirty years. So there's, there's different values add in a step program. Also, one thing I also will say that a step program, while it does create transparency, is also part of a budget process. So as a former budget director, I have to say this, that it's not a guarantee. There's no guarantees here at all because everything is contingent on council approval of the next budget. So I have worked in places where steps were not guaranteed because we didn't do any sort of employee merits. So that's something else to think about is why it does create transparency in terms of steps. That's all part and parcel of employee pay, which is all contingent on a budget adopted by city council. But it is, it's a more of a complicated, it's not as easy. By January, we could probably show you what a step would look like. But in terms of the cost, that, that would take us, I've seen consultants spend a year doing it, trying to figure out how to put employees in there. So we would need to do that.
So we don't make an adjustment to the pay in the step program for that year.
They would stay in that step.
But then it would compound.
It always compounds, just like it does now when we don't move the ranges. Yes, just in a different way.
How long did they keep it in Raleigh or did whoever?
About less than four years, I want to say. So number one, it, it's expensive. Long-term, it's expensive and it outpaces itself. And what you end up with is a bunch of employees at the top end of the scale with no room for growth. It also, um, it doesn't reward performance, so it doesn't address that. So there's a piece of that as well. They also have, that employee has to land on a step. And so what that means is that it doesn't allow for any sort of additional increases outside of that process unless you're going to move them a whole step. And so Raleigh was very generous originally in their step. Originally was a, if you were below the market, it was five. If you were above, it was three. And then they changed it to two and four. So they've played around with it in terms of cost, but you had to land on a step. So our ability to move employees to address issues was very limited. The other thing we found is that term leapfrogging I mentioned. There's a value, uh, and I have been in front of many employees trying to say, when we put people in a step, we value time and position. So if you're a police cap or a fire captain, for example, and you've been in that job for not a long time and someone below you back in that example has been with the city twenty years in Raleigh and they move up to a fire captain, they're going to make more than a fire captain that's been one. Well, that person automatically thinks they were leapfrogged. But, but then you're valuing time. And so to fix those, when we looked at it long-term, was going to cost the city of Raleigh millions of dollars. And every year I was there, we sunk millions into it trying to get it right. And it, it, it was just, it was tough. I will say that, and that's been at least a true, and they had a true step program all the way from firefighter all the way to captain.
One of, everybody can't be, you know, a captain. I think to me, in, in kind of what the private sector also, you know, just help generally, we can help, help the military, you know, promote people. Merit is the promotion. Everybody is not going to be promoted up. But once you, you know, when you are promoted up, what's your, you know, what's your salary is going to be.
Potentially, I mean, you kind of know that. I mean, I guess there could be some more clarity and work that we do on that end in terms of a promotional process as opposed to a step. Uh, because even with a step, there had to be, it was basically a ten percent going from here to here. So I think some of that. Uh, it could be, but.
Mine's maybe a, maybe a, my idea is a bit, is maybe a, a mix of those two. But mostly it's the, it's the promotional process, knowing as you advance, you may, you know, you may get to a point where you're not advancing, even though you've been in for a while. Because you're not performing at that, at that next level, you're not testing at that next level. But that, at least you know that you can, you could in theory advance, you know.
So you're looking at it more from, can I just clarify a question? More from a promotional, which is different than a step. So step is actually a true step system takes a firefighter from a step one, potentially all the way to a step ten where they would max out.
Just by time.
Just by time and service. So every year, instead of going through what we would call traditionally a merit process, based on as long as they, they received a, a good performance of L or however we want to say it, they would move to the next step. Uh, and employee would always have to, and depending on what, how you separate those steps. What you're talking about is more of a promotional process, which we were trying to get at a little bit with the fire and the firefighter senior, which we have seen in our benchmarks. That is, you know, most of the places I've ever worked always had some sort of differential like that. But some of that can be addressed through what do our promotional process say in terms of that?
How much you get.
How much you're getting on that percentage increase, which is different from a true step program.
Okay. Yeah. My, my terminology is constantly. Process that has a professional transparency, it tends to where you know, if you, you know, hit that next level where you're going to land, that's one member's fee. That's kind of what I.
That's, that's definitely, so we've, we've had, I think the departments, fire, police had a policy at one point, it was ten percent. And what that was creating is we had, to Mary's point, we had employees leapfrogging to other individuals that have been in that position. It's created compression. So what my staff has to do every time is motion is we have to analyze the time that person's been in the position, how long they've been with the city. Also, the city has added education pay at some of our employees' base salaries. And so we have to subtract that base payout to make sure we're looking at apples at apples. And then from there, we look at the equity of people in that position already. We got to place them in a spot that's not going to create compression that's equitable to everyone else that's already in that position. So there's analysis that has to take place, but we do have certain targets. We'd like to hit at least five percent for promotions and we get the exempt grades, it goes more. Um, but again, there's. And we get the exempt grades, it goes more. But again, there's, we just, we have to look at it and make sure our pay is equitable or not leapfrogging or creating compression when we do the promotional increases.
We, we could, no, we could potentially in January bring back an example of a true step, what I would understand. Maybe not designed necessarily for Wilmington, but at least to show you some of the pros and cons of it. And then we could potentially take a look at some of what our current promotional processes are and how that fits in and what that looks like and what some of our peers are doing there.
I tried to dive into the promotional processes personally.
Yeah.
Yeah. Trying to dive into the promotional processes. I get lost. So I can understand the frustration from the police standpoint.
Yeah.
How do I know where are the bases?
And we get that question, you know, I'm going through the process, Clayton or Kim, can you, can you tell me how much I'm going to make? Well, we can't, we can give you an idea. We can't give you an actual number simply because we don't know when you're going to be promoted, what the pay is going to look like in the next year. So there's just a lot of variables that go. But I understand. Yeah, I understand to your point, though, about the step being, you know, this, you can see where you're going to go.
I'm sorry, okay. In seeing where you're going to go, it's still based on improvement merit? I mean.
Yeah, most, most increases that the city employees get is the range, range adjustments or merit, correct?
But a step is not based on merit. If a true step program is based, you have to successfully meet just basic. But a true step is just, it, it is literally is time and service. Yeah, it's basically that, sir. Yeah. We typically historically have always reported based on merit.
So, so grade just would be a promotion. Within the promotion, you have time and grade.
Yeah. Yeah, those would be the steps.
That's more important to you in military than it is.
Yes.
I've already moved on that. I'm trying to find my forgotten. I appreciate, no, I appreciate the context. So, you know, even if we move to a true step payer, true ladder pay, six years or what, four years and we're all gone, and you've got a new counselor who doesn't want to do that anymore. So it doesn't guarantee, I don't know.
I like the idea of the low-end plan on your part to come up with something to avoid this every year.
It's, it's, so it's myself, Laura, Mary, Jennifer. We also have Kim Carson on that committee. We have Dave Mays. We have Steve and Donnie. So it's our big departments, everyone's HR, finance that is there on table. Yep.
When we talk about this, though, eventually we're going to have to pull in all the other employees.
That's correct.
Are we wanting to do that same kind of day or?
We would, we would not be able to do that mid-year because just a lot of work went into this. We would certainly bring something back for you, July one, to bring them back up to par. But there will, there will be a six-month period during which you will have disparity between departments on, on basis for, for compensation.
It'd be very similar to what we've done the last two years. We come forward with a range adjustment, make sure our ranges are aligned with the market as well as a fair adjustment for employees.
Now, in your report, I, I think I saw where, like police, he says, oh, people go to me, a lot of people go to me like. And Tony mentioned, it may be because I'm leaning more like maybe RST than this one like charter. A thousand calls and it goes somewhere like.
I think there's, there are times when it is, is it, I mean, when I worked out at the beach, we'd have police officers, our council members who were playing, people wanted to come to the beach because they didn't want to have to work in Wilmington where the call volume was so high. And that was not entirely true because some of our younger officers wanted something that was more upbeat, ongoing. But so I, I think it's just a matter of fit sometimes with the organization. Do you want to, you know, what, what kind of police officer do you want to be? What kind of firefighter do you want to be? You know, what kind of employee?
We must be having a bunch of turnover too.
I think, I think they've more added positions. But yeah, so we have one hundred and sixty-six officer positions. They only have thirty-seven officers.
And so if they've got a ten percent vacancy rate, we're going to lose four folks, right? But it's only four folks. I mean, I, I expect, I expect and encourage turnover in our department. You send six, seven, eight percent of our folk, or four, five, six percent of our folks have been dismissed because of performance issues. So for that, you should see some, some change as well as just bringing new blood into the organization. If it's above ten percent, I begin to be concerned. If it's below ten percent, I'm comfortable with that. I think that's something that just is natural progression.
Well, yes, for specifically fact, and I think baseline, what I'm hearing us say is we got, at the very end, we've got to come back up to that key and standard that we've been outpaced by. So number one, we've got to solve for that. And I would hope that we've got consensus around that. I'm interested in exploring what Luke described as greater clarity on a promotional structure where when people walk in and say, what am I going to make next year? You can give them a realistic number. Of course, that's going to be contingent on, as long as council passes this budget, this is what it will be. And we've got to, you know, we have to take that mantle that comes with the territory. But those are the two minimal things that I hope, you know, that's David George's feedback. There you go.
Thank you. Mine is similar to David.
Like to say that in addition to exploring the benefits and the benefits package, I'd like to see what we can do about cancer policies being offered to firefighters. Particularly, I know that APLI has, you know, a program for that. There's, there's some patents out there. I think the state has just passed something that they can lump sum.
Yeah, that's administered through the.
Yeah, and the lump sum is, I think, I think through cancer, it's like the lump sum is nothing. So I would especially like to look at that for our fire.
So we talked to Ken about that last year. Is there, is there desire on council's part to do something mid-year or wait and do something for everyone at the close of the fiscal?
I think we should see, I'd like to see. I think we're at a, I think we're at a critical path specific to our response.
And, and, and you, you have the numbers for what it would like, be like to do it for.
Three point one, right?
Well, that is, that is to put into place the senior firefighter and senior police officer positions included in that.
How do we do that? We just appropriate one balance to carry it over and then it's plugged into the budget?
Well, it becomes part of the deficit going into next year.
That's what I was going to. To do this mid-year, that would be the cost that we would take out of that balance for this year. But that means it automatically doubles because this is a half.
No, that's actually a full year.
That's what I was over here thinking. So mid-year would be half of that then is what we're talking about from fund balance. And then it's automatically added to what Laura was showing you as here's the variance that we have between our revenues and expenditures. This is already in there. She'll, she'll have to deduct that from that and show what we have left there. And that's just taking care of police.
What is your guess?
This for clarification, but for this year, the one-time mid-year would be taken from that balance, so it automatically adds for.
So when she showed you that gap earlier of one point eight to five, just because I have to do my reminder, that was on best case scenario of the five, worst case or more realistic is more of the one. This would be put into that, which means now you're looking at, really, we're almost looking at a deficit up to a two million dollar surplus at best case, without even any other employee compensations or changes to services. So that's what I'm, that's what we're trying to, is puts us already into building in a next year's budget.
For, for, for sixty percent of the employees. And I've got to say this, because I'm the manager for a hundred percent.
And it doesn't include increases to next year's merits or anything.
That will be something that will be difficult for folks to understand.
That's what I was going to ask. Because, you know, definitely with police environment being more compensated for this. If we do this to them now and not do anything else for anybody else, you know, and went back to your point, you know, a hundred percent employees. So would we be derelict to wait, bring it up in January? Maybe would it not be? If you got best of it?
I kind of, I kind of agree with holding it, we don't understand how what the number is. Think more than, yeah, because I do think you guys do it. Thanks. Within this organization. I think we can all say that we have a commitment to, to raise it publicly for certain. But we've got a lot of other departments that play a critical role in running the city. And I think we should just do it all at one time since we got this. This is beginning with the budget process. I would rather wait and just do it all.
January, we're getting mid-year, right? I hear you. And, but also here, I mean, the police and fire have people, you know, shoot out, or, or pull people out of burning vehicles every day. I mean, that, that to me is a priority and I'm hearing the most of it. As, as I said before, we're on a critical path there. So I mean, I'm not saying today, we, 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 we need to move on that, but by January, I think it would be a rise to, to consider.
Is January mid-year, January is going to be mid-year. We got a really way to do it. So did everybody include it, move it there after June?
June, July.
Because you've got all these other departments that are going to make adjustments plus pay adjustments. So this thing is like a B, this three point two, it could be up to ten.
And then that's going to get day checks in office.
And I'm not, you know, I definitely want to do it for the police officer. But I really think we got to look at all these other employees as well. I'm just need more to more, doing it back when we finally pass it like, so that everybody gets the same path. And, and, you know, I don't know who is at the critical state and we're going to be losing that many police officers of your staff.
You're talking about police environment?
Police environment, yeah, I'm talking about both, yeah, I'm talking about.
But, 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 but in police, we're, what, seventeen off, twenty, thirteen, what are we?
Probably more like forty in the field. We start factoring in militarily, FMLA, so it's, it's a lot higher than, so what that number up there was.
No, truly, even FMLA, we, we, we can't, we, we can't do anything about that.
So they've got thirty holes today, but when you count in the people that are in the academy, it's four.
And you have a new station.
But again, it's going to take time. They're working overtime and, and it's a.
We can always make the mid-season adjustment. I'm not saying that we, we should do it, but I would like to see a lot of time. I just think it's just it's just easier to deal with it all at the time. But we have to make the adjustments in the next.
Well, if we do it mid-year, do we want to do option one or option two? My concern with option two is that we're asking for long-term feedback on whether we go down this step pay structure. Right. But option two kind of begins to implement a step, a step structure today, and we're not even sure long-term that's what we're going to do. So, so I would say if we do it mid-year, we need to do option one so that we can actually evaluate long-term. That's right.
Yeah, that, that one, that, that makes sense. It makes sense. You know, if you're doing a mid-year adjustment, does that also mean come January or July, we're going to do another adjustment?
I think we're going to, I think we're going to have to look at.
I, I agree to make sure we maintain the competitiveness because there, I mean, those benchmarks are going to also adjust their starting pace.
The, the, in August, this group got a call from the city of Asheville, wanting to know what kind of increases we implemented, what were we looking at? That's how competitive it is. The minute it went into effect, they were ready to go for it.
They'll do that again.
Yes, they may, they may be concentrating on more bigger.
So right now, though, where are we as relation aligning to the market? Aren't we in the ballpark?
So it's, it, it varied by, by rank, but we are behind in both policing, fire in terms of starting pay for officers and firefighters.
Starting pay.
Starting pay, and even the upper ranks, you'll notice some of the, the upper ranks, captains and above, in fire especially, are behind. So it's, it's up and down. We are, we are behind.
So bring that back to January.
So you want us to bring back option one in January, also including that, the rest of the organization? No.
Just fire and police and public works as presented at option one. And that we will present that to them in January for enactment theoretically February. But, and then we will do the rest of the pop, the employee population in conjunction with the adoption of FY twenty-six budget.
Can we also be looking at that promotional?
We'll look at that, bring that back in January.
Not to make a mid-year change, but we've got to start wrapping our heads around.
Right, we're, we're with you.
Tony, on, on the revenue side of this, this is going to, it's going to come with the costs, price fat. So I'm going to be looking at council members, see what y'all want cut. Texting was for talking. That's what I think we, the community needs to be aware of that. We did a two and a half last time, there was a five percent increase. Now we're asking for more. And what are we going to look at in the CIP and some of the other stuff that we're going to have to hold back?
That, that's the whole purpose of today is to set the stage for you to understand the pressures that are working on that budget.
And I'm sure y'all have some ideas to.
Yes, sir.
If we do an option one, basically say, you got to look at what we can do for the police and the fire.
And, and, and of course.
And public work.
And parks.
And then after that, we'll look at all the other employees.
With the adopt, with the adoption of the FY twenty-six budget, we would do a second look at those, that, that group of employees to make sure we're staying competitive as of July one. And then we would bring back the rest of the, the other forty percent of the employees. That's the direction you want us to head. We want to head to a transfer policy. That will come later. That'll come with the FY twenty-six budget as well. Thank you for your feedback. We really appreciate this.
The update after all the days, the city manager mentioned is an update on surplus property. We will just jump right into it. Some of this content, you'll remember from my presentation on the skyline center update back in August. Do I have control here? Yes, here it is. So just a very high level overview to start. We have sold five properties in the last ten months and have another one under contract, which would put us about a clip of six properties over the last thirteen months as the transaction that's under contract now is expected to close in January. We'll see some of the, the dollar amounts tied to that here soon. We do have some current activity at three oh five, three fifteen and three nineteen Chestnut, both in the form of city-led initiatives. The demolition contract was authorized by council here recently. And we are getting ready to take our, our first excavator to the building here, likely to be shortly after Thanksgiving. So as the year, calendar year wraps up, we will be initiating and ideally completing that demolition work. And we also have some activity around interest in purchase of that building. We'll typically get inquiries on different properties time to time. With the upset bid process, that initial bid is privately negotiated until the point where it goes to council for authorization and initiation of the upset bid process. So we do have some of that activity at, at the three oh five Chestnut Street property, as well as at the Second Street Deck and one fifteen North Third Street offices. That's the five-story office building at the corner of Third and Chestnut, along with the interest in potential purchase, which again is in initial phases of discussion and not something ready to be on a council agenda just yet. We have the GSA offer. We have the GSA offer that was authorized by council here recently. That is still in the final stages of negotiation, the city has not yet signed that lease, but we are optimistic that that will, a deal will get done there. And that'll change substantially the way that the market views that building. And then also of note, we have a couple of properties here that we, I'm calling pending listings. Uh, recently council authorized on-call broker service contracts. In an effort to not only expand our bandwidth and capabilities of turning over these properties quicker, selling them quicker. And enhancing the value of them, but also to um expedite the timeline that we repay some of the, the debt service. That I know council is interested in seeing the sale proceeds go to. So those pending listings are what we call uh skyline north, as well as the former southeast command center. With skyline north being the, the lot immediately north of the building here um at the, at skyline center. So, yes, sir.
Do we have a, a pending listing price first?
That is still in the final stages of discussion as well, but I'll, I'll tell you directionally, it's in the, the high single-digit millions. High single-digit millions, if I can be a little vague. At this point. Yes. So sales activity, as I, as I mentioned, has been incremental. We've had five transactions closed over the last ten months, that total three point one million dollars. And another transaction that's set to close here uh in January, mid to late January of next year. So that'll bring us to about five point two million dollars over the last thirteen months. That gives us a, a clip of about four hundred thousand dollars a month or five million dollars a year rounding up. Uh, in sales transactions over the last year. So I, I noticed the, the progress seems somewhat slow at times, but it is incremental and we are making headway. We do have some of these bigger, more valuable properties to list, that'll obviously move the averages. Uh, but those bigger properties are more complex, they take longer to negotiate, longer to start up and, and longer to initiate. A um council authorized transaction for, so we've done a lot of work on those. I don't want you to think they're sitting idle because there's interested parties and there's work being done on those. But um there is quite a bit of, of work left to do, hopefully we're going to have some of those here soon. Especially given the market reach and additional operational bandwidth that bringing on the brokers and get, getting some of these MLS listings out there. Will do for us here uh as we get into the twenty twenty-five. So as I've already mentioned, these on-call brokers contracts have been established, we've, we've signed three of those. Um, subsequent to council approving those on-call brokers contracts, we asked all of the on-call brokers to submit listing proposals for seven groups of property. Uh, we wrapped that process up in terms of a deadline for proposal submittals in late September. And we have since reviewed all those proposals via selection committee here internally and staff. And have come up with three initiatives to kick off, uh, three task orders to issue with uh our on-call brokers. And I put those uh up here on the slide for your review. With skyline north, uh, the recommended firm that scored the highest out of the, the selection committee process was JLL. Their nationwide firm that's going to have tremendous reach for us on this type of property and. And really be able to hit the ground running with it as they're already very familiar with it um on, on both the buyers and quasi-sale side. So we are going to recommend that transaction type being sale, we are going to list it, as I mentioned, in, in the single-digit millions, upper end of the single-digit millions. And we're also um recommending Downing Country as the firm to uh list the former southeast command center. That's at twenty-four fifty-one College Road. Uh, directionally speaking, we're looking at a million and a half, two million dollar price range for a list price on that property. And then uh third on here is we are not recommending for sale at this point, consistent with the recent council action on the GSA lease. One fifteen North Third Street, we'd like to see further stabilization in that building prior to selling it. So our proposal for a uh transaction type on this building is a, a lease option. Of course, if a sale were to walk through the door, we would consider it and put it on a council agenda. But we think to garner the most value for the taxpayer, for the city, we want to see that building's occupancy rate go up. And that'll hopefully increase the, the market appeal of it as well as the, the resale price. On these other properties you see here, the current action is to temporarily hold. Uh, we have quite a bit of inventory, especially on the north end of downtown. We don't want to water down the market too much, so we want to take these properties to market incrementally over time and, and roll out a more. Uh thoughtful incremental strategy as it comes to these additional properties here, yes, sir.
We, we arrive at numbers, so we, so four at the bottom here, will that come back for us before you sign a listing agreement?
No, sir, not with the listing agreement, but council would authorize the disposition process, whether that's upset bid or sealed bid. Okay, we could certainly share that, uh, the recommendation, absolutely. And is that on all these, Councilman Reverend Mark, or just the, the four on the bottom there?
Already listed, the, the top three.
Not yet, those are, those are pending still, but they'll be hitting the markets, yes, sir.
Well, we were the ones that signed, spend sixty million dollars here, I'd like to see what we're selling it for.
Understood. Councilman Liddell, is there a question?
Yeah, and I think you were doing some, some like pre-due diligence items to make it more marketable. Uh, that's part of your presentation, but maybe some of the ones that are temporary, all of you still actively kind of get some information, pull together for a packet.
Yes, sir. It is, is my philosophy that the rigidity of our disposition methods, upset bid and sealed bid sale. Is such that it serves the public to solve for any of the, the unknowns or let's call them latent problems associated with the property. As an example of that, ten twenty-one North Front Street is a potential brownfield site. Uh, that brownfield application process is something a buyer would view as risky, there are a lot of unknowns associated with that. So the city is taking the initiative to apply for a brownfield designation. Uh, assert that eligibility, be able to market it as brownfield eligible, and then even go a step further as to develop an initial plan. For what would be required by DEQ in terms of the, the brownfield mitigation to get that site back into uh reuse. So the city is spending some money to initiate that brownfield application process, as well as a full design level survey on that property. So that prospective buyers can have a more intelligent means to uh see how they would develop it and what the cost associated with that would be. So we are spending some money on additional uh upfront due diligence on that. Uh, I, I think we'll pay substantial dividends in terms of, of resale rate when, when it hits the market. So moving on to skyline center leasing, um, unless there's any other questions on the other surplus properties. We have had an uptick in tours here since we spoke to you last in August. The, the interest in the building continues to remain high, so the pipeline of potential transactions continues to grow, more on that here in a moment. But in terms of actual secured leases that we can bank on in the FY twenty-six budget, we have seven of those. That'll be in FY twenty-six and the secured committed revenue as part of those leases for FY twenty-six is two point three million dollars. So the results are, are strong there so far in the initial phases of our lease-up. Uh, we do have three leases set to expire in under a year, but that was already accounted for in that, that number I just mentioned previously, that two point three million dollars. Uh, lease turnover is, is always expected, it'll, it'll be a, a fact of life here in the operations of this building. We do have substantial inventory left in square footage, but we have a lot of, of proposals pending out there that could significantly change. Um, the operating revenues of this building and, and bring us into uh a, a more balanced operating revenue versus operating expense here situation soon. So progress continues to be made, we're hoping to have some items to put in front of council here in the months ahead. Some of these proposals are in the final stages of negotiation, others are in the earlier stages. Uh, it's, it's a bit unpredictable, but given the, the volume we have, we're, we're hopeful that there'll, there'll be some proposals hitting the council agenda soon. Yes, sir.
Where are the vacant um spaces in the building?
We have portions of the fourth floor that are still vacant. Uh, we have about, I'll call it eighty percent, Chad, do you think it is, of the eighth floor that's currently vacant? The entire ninth floor, as well as two suites on the first floor. That um are soon to be, one is already listed for leased, the other, now the WMPO has vacated. Is, is um soon to be added to our inventory of prospective leases. No, sir, not a, not a present. That is it for my update on surplus property and leasing at Skyline Center, happy to answer any additional questions.
Mr. Mayor, uh, lunch is ready for you, us, uh, it is actually going to be on the second floor, not on the first floor. We're going to be on the second floor as you get off the elevators, you go south, no, yeah, south. Uh, and there's a training room on that side of the building, with the class of walking down there.
Back in session, I do need to do a road call, I'm here for the ten here.
Yeah.
Councilman Rodenmark, Councilman Spears, Councilman Spears. Come on, let's meet, come on. All right, Councilman Waddell.
Here.
Councilman Andrews.
Here.
Councilmember Jordan.
Here.
And chairs here, we have four ready to go.
How did you?
Next. Mr. Mayor, contrary to what's been reported in the, in the local news media, we have not made a decision to just continue safe life. So I haven't bothered to let the county know that we're considering this yet until you uh get to hear this presentation. Well, we have been doing some fairly extensive uh research into the Safe Life program. Uh, as you will recall, where we left this last time, was you, uh, the contract actually expires at the close of fiscal year this year. And uh, we had some concerns about safety issues associated with cameras, not necessarily enforcement issues. Uh, we have since uh been able to do a little research on that, see, see what kind of alternatives we have. And today we have uh two folks with us, Dennis McKinnon, who's, who is our traffic engineer. I guess Dennis, you're going to start us off uh on uh safe life and where we are with it and potentially.
I've just got a very general overview of what safe light is to begin with. We've got thirteen intersections that we're currently monitoring. Um, this map shows how they're dispersed around town. At the conclusion of the current contract, which as Tony mentioned is June thirty of this year. At that point, our vendor, Veramobility, would come and remove their equipment from the infrastructure. So they have equipment installed on our infrastructure. So we would be left with uh the poles, the conduits, the um, all of the routing to power supplies, anything like that. So uh, that's what Tony was alluding to of what are our options with that infrastructure if we do not continue the program? Um, so at this point, I'll turn it over to Brian to talk about those options.
Thank you, Dennis. Um, IT went out and, and contacted Motorola and they gave us a replacement option. In the next page, you'll see their cost on it, we looked for thirteen cameras. Part of the uh, this was, we're going to put it on the existing infrastructure and we would have a five-year agreement with them. And so first of all, your notes show the total five-year cost is two hundred and eleven thousand. We've left something off and it's now two sixty over the five-year cost, so I'll explain that in one second. So these are um solar-powered cameras that do license plate reading. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Come here and take.
We.
Take their stuff, Motorola, put their stuff on.
We, we will buy them from Motorola and then we would own, own the product after five years. So it's a, we would not be using them except for to purchase the equipment and have the software leased with them.
I think we need to pause a second, we didn't talk about how we got here, so I will pause and say, sorry. Some people were too familiar with this, that when we left, last coun, last left council, it was with the notion of one of the reasons that we kept the cameras in place. Was because of the use of PD, uh, the police department. And so part of what we have been working on is going out and looking at what would it take for the city in those same locations? In order to operate the camera system without it being part of the red light camera. So we would get out of the red light camera business with the county and we would do it. And so what you're seeing today is we went out and looked at if we kept the infrastructure in place. Uh, and, and got that transferred over from the current vendor in terms of the poles and that kind of thing. What it would take for us to contract with someone else to put in cameras and the IT infrastructure needed. So that PD could have that same quality, so sorry, we, we got ahead of ourselves assuming everybody knew where we were at.
And so, to get back to the numbers, year one, sixty-three, five, years one and two, and years one and two for Motorola.
They have the data plan with Verizon for a year, one and two.
The total five-year cost is two hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Yes, sir.
Well, this, this is all as a result of, police had some concern about removing the cameras with regard to safety issues. We did an analysis, Dennis ran the analysis and found that statistically, really the, the cameras were really not doing a lot to curtail accidents. But police still use the cameras in term, in, in terms of searching for vehicles, going through intersections, those kinds of things. And so we're trying to look at what it would cost to replace those cameras, for cameras that we could use in a similar fashion for post-incident um debriefing.
Okay, so the bottom line is, in your original statement, it was, it said two hundred and eleven thousand. Found out we forgot to add the uh cell service for years three, four and five, so that's the cost differential. So it would cost us two hundred and sixty thousand over five years, assuming that the poles and the wiring and all that infrastructure is left in place. But they are solar-powered and they also have uh SIM cards that'll record the data that we can dial into essentially and then download the data when needed. Any questions on the numbers, yes, sir? This does not begin this thing.
It possibly can with.
With what?
Futures, that software that we've worked with on, so yes.
There. Is there a, a, an additional expense?
No, we've already paid for it.
So it could be, I mean, I don't want to be oversimplified, it could be done.
Would, in real time, currently or not in real time, we have to request the videos, but if you go to the LPR, we possibly have it, information at real time, which can be a game changer.
One of the questions, uh, it's not the, the red light camera process is not producing accidents, it's still taking pictures of red light crashes?
It is definitely taking pictures of the crash.
That's my point, yes. I mean, those are, those are accidents waiting to happen. So, you know, somebody asked me the other day, I said, well, you know, they were put in place in the nineties for a very good reason and they worked, they reduced a lot of intersection accidents. And but the fact that they're still taking pictures of people caught in the middle of an intersection on a clearly red light is, I mean. They're still, they're still serving a good purpose.
There, there is value, from my opinion, from the traffic safety standpoint, there is absolute value in, in red light camera systems. Um, if you weren't aware, the city of Greensboro was re-instituting their program where they're considering re-instituting their program, so. And there's lots of municipalities across the country that use them. And looking at the crashes that have occurred. It, it was really, it's really strange to see that at locations with the fewest number of citations are the ones where we're having crashes. So there's this weird relationship between the number of red light citations and crashes, it's like an inverse relationship. Um, so I'm, I use the cameras to come up with engineering treatments possibly for the intersections. What are drivers seeing, why are these crashes occurring? So if we can do that with other cameras, that's great, you know, I'd love to have access to the cameras for sure. Um, but because of the number of, I mean, we're forty, forty-five thousand, fifty thousand citations are issued a year. It's a whole lot of people running red lights, you know, so.
The thing that I hate to see is looking back at this table next year or whenever, you know, two, two, three years after we've done it. And, and the accidents are, are occurring. And most people assume, and rightly so, that there's a delay in the red light for the cross streets and they take advantage of that. You know, they're running a red light, but the person over here on the left is not, ain't got a green light yet. But it's still running a red light, that's one of the most dangerous things in the world you live. Thank you.
Dennis, which, which location has?
Dennis, which, which location has, has?
It's difficult to say, if you break it down per lane. I think Third and Dawson is the highest. If you're on Third Street, at Dawson going towards downtown. But most crashes per lane occur at that. And there is a lot of congestion at that intersection, which is the confusing part of. Twenty-third of Market also gets a lot. And a lot of those, I would say a third of those are people improperly turning right on red. They just, they know it's a T-intersection. And, you know, everybody has the right to appeal their citation. So I sit in, you know, the appeal hearings. And it's, but it's a T-intersection, there's no impact. And when you explain to them that there is a pedestrian crosswalk across that T that you're just whipping around, then it's like, oh, you know, I did. The light bulb kind of goes off on these.
How many people in this room has ever had a red light?
Are we, are we saying we're gonna not use the red light, safe light, and then just putting in lights that will be, read people's tags and stuff like that?
We would be, as Mary mentioned, we would be ceasing the red light, the photo enforcement of a red light system. Wilmington would be getting out of the red light photo enforcement.
The money is from the red light though, it goes, most of it goes in the school system.
Ninety percent of it.
And it, and we share the cost of the program with the county on a fifty-fifty basis. They pay approximately two hundred and fifty thousand a year. We pray approximately two hundred and fifty thousand a year to be able to collect that million dollars for the county.
I mean, we want to do this because we want to allow the police department to have access to that camera.
Yes, sir. They, they, they use it, for example, if, if there's a shooting in an area and they start trying to trace the, the car across the city, they may spot check those cameras to see if that car has gone across the city.
And they can't do that in a safe light.
They do, they do, but if Safe Light goes away, then the Safe Light cameras go away. And so we have to replace those with new cameras.
So this comes about because Safe Light is playing a role.
You're planning to do away with it.
Because?
Because you're paying a quarter of a million dollars a year and not getting any return on it.
Except the schools getting.
Except the schools getting something, yes.
And what do they get?
Almost a million dollars. You're right. I'm sorry, I'm a little bit, I'm a little bit, more than a million dollars a year.
And my understanding, I'm sorry. My understanding is that you can't get that footage though unless you request it. This is a third-party private operator. And so it's not real time, but if we own the cameras, it can be real time. And we're watching somebody leave the city with these cameras.
Let, let me, let me clarify right now. The proposal we have is not real time. We believe we can talk to Verizon because it's public safety. They will give us real time, because we have it in a couple of our other cameras. So the proposal is not for real time, but being that we're the city for public safety purposes, we believe we can get real time for that.
It's very useful, there's no question about that. It takes you to go away. I, I do too, and part of me wants to see Dennis create a little bit of his time because he has to go through all of these things. But I, I agree, it's, it's a, it's a heck of a revenue source for the county.
Let's just say, we back up and we go back out, and the county says we're gonna take it over.
I guess is the county won't take it over because it's too closely akin to streets and they don't want to do streets, they don't do streets. They may ask us if they, if we would be willing to continue the program if they reimburse us for all of the costs. We don't know yet, we haven't entered into that discussion.
Okay, because I mean, I'm hearing that we really want to do it because we want to give police access to that like that section. But then on the other hand, I'm hearing that we want to not do it because it's cost, it's cost us. Now, my, my position I'm taking right now is, I, I hate to see the county or the kids lose that million dollars. I hate to see the schools not be able to.
That was a hundred and ten things. I mean, that was, when we first did this in the nineties, there was never, never any talk of the money going. And we weren't getting into it to make money, we were getting into it for safety. But when, when getting this money did start out, we had a million dollars. Very shortly into the program, we were informed that all that money had to go to the school board. So, and they've gotten used to getting that money each year. Still upside down.
The per, the, the intent behind the statute, from what I've read is, the General Assembly is fine with municipalities having the authority to do this. But they don't want us doing this to raise money for ourselves. So they offset it by saying, you can do this as a public safety enforcement mechanism and the money you make has to go to the schools, you don't get to keep it. They do the same thing, for example, if somebody already has a DWI on their record and gets pulled over for a new one, the police department takes the car. Well, the city and the police department don't keep that car, that car can be sold and that money is given to the schools. Because you don't want to incentivize, you don't want to give like a financial incentive to over policing basically. So it is a secondhand consequence, it's not intended as revenue source for the school system. Or safely, I don't think the school system or the county.
I never meant to say that it was a revenue generator for the school, ladies happened to be sitting there. I don't even know what, ten percent, I mean, I want to ensure, I sure as hell doesn't cover our expense. So that, that part, that part of it is, is not good, although money does go to a good goal.
It's my understanding that the part also was that whatever it was generated was going to be used for neighborhood enhancements to slow down. Traffic calming and that went away, so that.
When that was presented to us, there was a whole sheet, just like they're showing the, the options of the, the revenues that it was going to generate. It wasn't going into the general fund, it was going to pre, pre for my dentist's department. That was when everybody was screaming for speed humps. And we came up with squeezers and other round, roundabouts and stuff.
What about the safety piece? Like, are we? I mean, if they, if public learned that no longer this third and whatever street is, there's not a camera anymore. Will people start speeding there more?
I tell you what, I know where the cameras are, but when I see that damn thing, I, I slow down with, with y'all.
Showing us, you're showing us a group of evidence that it doesn't really help.
There is a strange relationship between the number of citations that are issued and where we're actually having crashes. Are there environmental reasons why these crashes are occurring?
But if I, if I have the cameras, it's my understanding that if it's in real time, that there is a crash, they can't go.
We can review the footage.
So the crashes that you're referring to, are they happening at red light intersections?
There are some red light camera locations that have had one or two crashes in five years. And I just looked at this this morning. There are, there's one that's had thirty-three in five years and one that's had eighteen in five years, so.
Are there other intersections of note that you can think of where the accidents are happening at a higher, than normal rate where they're not camera?
I would have to review some crash reports on that, yeah.
Because we had the top twenty-five in the, in the nineties, it was top twenty-five, and that's where they, we had, we backed in, which started out top ten, I guess.
I remember seeing that list and I, I do remember noting that at a lot of those intersections, some major construction projects have occurred that have changed the traffic in that general area. So, so again, this is the, the consideration here is to, to disband the red light photo enforcement program. But to retain the video access, you know, more immediate video access to the police department to apply to traffic engineering as well. So it would be a natural, a natural expiration of the current contract. We would just be seeing it out. We signed up for four point seven years with Ver Mobility. That would come to an end. They would come remove their equipment, we would retain the infrastructure. So from there, it would just identifying funding options to install these cameras, to install the Motorola cameras Brian was mentioning. And then to include those ongoing costs, you know, post FY twenty-six.
So the ongoing cost would be fifty-two thousand, fifty-two thousand a year. Sixty, five, five, so is that our anticipated here, your, having expense? For years two through, I mean, year three through five, I wrote this down here, is about fifty-ish. A year. And I, and that's the quote that Motorola receives from Verizon. We get much better rates from that, so these are, should be high numbers, budgeting purposes. Whereas, we own, we own. Yes. We own the cameras, I think it's absolutely a priority. The WPD has the ability to, to see what's going on and access those cameras. I love that. And that was always something I think everybody, you know, despite our maybe differences on the Safe Life program. That access and Dennis. But fifty thousand dollars a year based on we're spending now three hundred and, and rising, and it's not reducing crashes. Yeah, and it, as Mr. Caldwell mentioned, Dennis doesn't have to do everything. It's all access from whoever IT gives permission to. So the Sting Center can go out there, if it's not real time, and pull the stuff, Dennis's folks can do it. So it's not limited to one staff member, it's whoever the city desires to have that access to it.
Yeah, I think it's, I wouldn't say it's important, but you know, you almost have to thank Ver Mobility for installing these new cameras with the video because it, it gave us this idea, you know.
So absent further direction from council, we will proceed ahead with termination of the Ver Mobility contract and installation of our own cameras at those intersections that will have police departments and potentially other access.
I would just prioritize as well to, to that. Prioritize what it means to the IT standpoint that Sting Center can plug in. That's. Yeah, now that we have direction, we can start talking to Verizon and the other folks to get things moving.
What if the county said, we'll pay for it, or is, is it possible to put both there?
I don't see why not, honestly.
It's a possibility.
I think they're giving the presentation downstairs right now, on these Motorola cameras, so.
They are.
Where I was before this.
If you can put both there and then maybe encourage the county.
We certainly can ask the county if, we can certainly tell them it's the city's intention to terminate the contract, close the fiscal year. And they, to dis, discontinue it. And if they would like to enter into discussions on how to, they might be able to continue that, we'll certainly be glad to do that. I'll be glad to talk to the county manager and tell him directly what we can or can't do. I, I will tell you that if we do keep them in place, it probably would, I don't know. There would be some time, Dennis, that would need to be paid as well, because he is now spending, he and his predecessor both spent a great deal of time reviewing crashes at intersections for.
As well as, he's also the hearing officer for appeals.
They also have space downstairs, so.
Get any interesting stories? I mean, I always like. Having my car get that answer.
Not at liberty to say.
With the county manager. No, they're, they're with.
No, if we, if we go to the new cameras without red light, we would no longer be issuing citations. There no longer be a need for Dennis to be the appeal. He will still be reviewing the intersection if something would occur. But the actual citation and the program management, Safe Light, red light camera program will go away. And that level of work will go away. So we replaced the cameras, you know you're going to get a public request. It was an accident, Tony says, I want to get a, get a copy of that video. Who would do that?
Just a public records request.
And when, when you give the figure of whatever this quarter million dollars a year that this is costing us. Is that including the, the traffic engineering time?
No.
It does not include his time. Dennis generally charges for his time. Yes, it clearly is a cost. There is a timeline to, to do away with this contract. We're going to do away with the certain candidates, and so if they decide not to, they jump into that process.
I, I will, I will be in touch with the county manager.
The money that's accruing to the school district, while it's very nice, is, is actually reducing the county's to look at how they're gonna budget for that.
That wasn't part of the county's compensation to the, I mean, not compensation, that was part of their annual allocation to the school board, was it?
I am not budgeted, but I do not think it was included.
It's kind of like getting money from NBC board. We just get it. We will report back on what happens with our conversation. Now we move on to transportation and mobility.
Good afternoon, everyone. All right. So first of all, we wanted to just start off by thanking you. In this part of the FY twenty-five budget, the council approved a new twenty-dollar motor vehicle fee, in addition to the five dollars that the city was already charging. And that, under state statutes, that five dollars, the first five dollars can be used for anything. However, any funds above that five dollars do have limitations that are placed on them. So for the twenty dollars that you adopted as part for the FY twenty-five budget, we can use that on anything that's related to local transportation, so city-owned and maintained public streets. And specifically, we need to use that for maintenance, repair, construction, reconstruction, widening and improvements. We cannot use the funds on anything that is a state-owned or maintained street. So that's one of the limitations that we have when we look at how do we, how do we proceed forward with that, that new revenue source. So in, in talking, as we started to put this program together, we really wanted to focus on transportation and mobility overall and looking at our local street network. So just basically, transportation really refers to the infrastructure vehicles and services, services that enable movement. Whereas mobility talks about the quality of that movement. So how easy, accessible, and efficient is it for people to move from one point to another? How do transportation options address considerations such as time affordability and safety? So we started with that and then started to look at, now how does that affect neighborhood traffic management? And there are really four pieces when we look at neighborhood traffic, and I know that's, that's how this was presented to the council as part of the budget, or initial budget request, is looking at neighborhood traffic overall. So the four basic pillars in terms of transportation, mobility, and neighborhood traffic is looking at traffic flow management. So how are we designing our streets? What, what are the, what are the sizes, lanes, what kind of traffic coming features are we using? The second one, public transportation, the more we can encourage the use. The second one, public transportation, the more we can encourage the use of public transit and the fewer vehicles that we'll have on the road. So that can, that can also help with managing traffic overall. Improving our active transportation options such as walking and bicycling, again, providing alternatives to needing to be in a vehicle at all times. And all of that also comes together with land use and zoning. Are we encouraging mixed use areas and neighborhoods that are designed so that you can actually meet some of your daily needs? Or get to work without having to traverse the entire city? So again, just talking about some of the, some of the, the main principles that we're looking at as we put a program together. How do we manage traffic, safety, and really just improve overall accessibility and, and reduce the impacts? Because we know that through the surveys that are done every two years, traffic management is one of the highest, largest concerns that our residents have. So the, the slide you have before you talks about the four areas that staff is proposing that we focus on with these new funds. To, to identify projects as well as different initiatives that we can move forward to improve overall transportation and mobility across the city. Just a reminder that in terms of the overall funds, we are anticipating about one and a half million or one point eight million dollars each year. So the way we have broken this out is that we have about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that each year going to program implementation. And so these are the two positions that you approved as part of the FY twenty five budget. One is a transportation planner in the planning department and the other is a project engineer in the engineering department. Those two positions are really going to work together to, to help prioritize projects, do outreach with the community. Provide support to our existing bicycle and pedestrian committee. And also one of the key pieces for the transportation planning position is to really work on grants, ways that we can leverage our funds. Better and get and bring in more grant funding when it comes to transportation projects. The engineer will be also be working on project design and in-house cost estimates. Not yet. We are both in the recruitment process for that. In terms of the actual project funds, this is in the capital improvement program presently. And so this is really going to be the focus of our, our proposal to you today. And what we're looking at are four categories of how to spend that money over the next two years. The first one is focused impact projects. And this includes examples such as sidewalk gaps, crosswalks, pavement markings, traffic calming measures and signage. And things that we can do in neighborhoods across the city. The second one that you'll see on there is what we're calling a community response program. This is also to address small projects, but as for immediate concerns, for things that we don't have on the books, but something comes up that we really need to address promptly. This will provide us a funding source to be able to go do that. The third area that we're proposing funding is for grant matching. And so providing, and this is something that most transportation infrastructure grants do require a local match. So they will not give you one hundred percent funding for a project. They do anticipate that you're going to provide some level of funding. So this again provides a source for that. And the last component of our proposal for the next two years is to do a transportation and mobility plan. This would be partial funding. As I noted in the beginning, we are not allowed to use this funding for anything that deals with state roads. So to do a full transportation and mobility plan for the entire city, that obviously includes the state road network. And we'll need to supplement that with additional funds, but our, our proposal would be to do this as part of our update to the Create Wilmington Conference of Plan.
Take a look at the fiscal year twenty five projects. Planning to add curb extensions at the front and Doc Street intersection. Also planning to install a permanent median at Racing and College Acres Drive, which is now temporary delineators. Alternative funding has been provided for the Tenth and Grace intersection. So those funds will be available for other uses. Setting aside funds for neighborhood traffic management in Sunset Park. And improving the safety for the Pine Grove Drive crossings at the Munich Golf Course. Fiscal year twenty five grant matching funds will be provided for a portion of the greater downtown bike and pedestrian improvements. And sidewalks in the College Acres area. Fiscal year twenty six grant matching funds will be provided for the Pine Grove Drive Trail. That's in, in anticipation of the Bridge Investment Program Grant Award and the Medical Center Drive sidewalks.
As I previously mentioned, the other, the fourth component of what we're looking to do over the next few years is a transportation and mobility plan. And as I'm sure many of you know, we have several documents. We have the Walk Wilmington Plan. There are past neighborhood traffic management plans that have been done. There's the twenty thirteen Greenway Plan. So the, the intent here is that this plan will, will build on all of those previous efforts. But we'll be able to consolidate things into one, one, one area. And also identify needed improvements that are based on our growth strategy. So as our, as our land use and our growth strategies change, strategies change, we can identify the improvements that we need to keep up with that. The intent is that this plan will also help us to prioritize projects as, as we come upon each capital improvement cycle. Because we will have something that is guiding us along the way instead, instead of just simply looking and saying, this is what we think we need. We will have that, that all identified as part of this plan as well as mechanisms to continually update, update that in the future. So one of the things we did want to, to show you is that what we tried to do with this is identify projects across the city. So you'll see that the projects that have been identified for fiscal years twenty five and twenty six are geographically diverse. They are also diverse in terms of the, the types of socio, social vulnerability. Assess characteristics of those neighborhoods. So the darker the color, the higher the social vulnerability assessment is for the, from the CDC.
This scheduling chart shows that the fiscal year twenty five projects are expected to be complete. And fiscal year twenty seven, and that's assuming that we can fill our project engineer position in the near future. This shows that the transportation mobility plan that Linda was referring to earlier. That will inform the use of the funds in fiscal year twenty seven and beyond. So any guidance that you can provide would be appreciated. More specifically here, if you've got projects that you have not seen in this list, that you think are important.
But the community response program, it's got nine thousand dollars out there. Can we, that if somebody calls in, we can put like a, a speed, you know, ten shows the speed. A speed map, yeah. Can we acquire a couple more of those? I don't know how many it's, it has, but. Dennis. And could that help to deploy those to neighborhoods that need them? I mean, that's just a quick engine that seems to work. And when you're looking towards a, a longer term solution.
Yeah, currently we're doing that out of the Traffic Engineering Division operating funds. But the purchase of additional units would be helpful from this. That's a good idea. I don't know off the top of my head. That is a good first initial response though to complaints that we get.
And it's quick.
We start gathering data too, so that we can make informed decisions. Part of the concept of community response program that we envision. There are times in which council was tasked with doing some, rendering some response. And we wanted to make sure we left some flexible in the budget. Some kind of device and that, that at least allows us to do something quick until a long-term solution can be provided. I think on Brable Look Road where we added those flexible delineators or posts, all of those kinds of responses. We'll at least do that in the interim until a more long-term. That's really the intent and the speed minders are affected too.
What, what are we doing at golf course?
There are currently four crossings in proximity to each other and they will be consolidated into one. I think there's an additional one that's separate from the others. Consolidating them into one spot and put a hawk signal so that you'll have a more like a standard traffic light that will stop people. Making a safer place. You can, on the screen is the, the four crossings. That will be consolidated and. Some work would be done on the golf course. Yeah, we may remember or recall presentation to council regarding the hazards of. And traffic. And so what we're proposing right now initially is just. It's not actual construction. That'll come later in the subsequent year, but initially we need to look at the design of, of that roadway. Same with Sunset.
Same with what?
Sunset Sound Neighborhood Contest. Yeah, the other on the left of this slide is Sunset. Or, or neighborhood. So we're planning on just setting aside money, some funds to, to look at what can be done in that neighborhood. To improve traffic and the truck traffic down Burnett Boulevard. That we don't have a defined scope at this point, so we're just setting aside funds to study that.
We can, with this, with this funding, we can, we can refresh markings on streets. I mean, that's, those are just quick fixes rather than kind of large cross scale projects where we're already. Overburdened with some of the projects that you guys are taking on. Like we'd be pretty reactive to, hey, this, this street. We can just repaint all the markings and make them more visible to.
Yes, we, we do that now out of Traffic Engineering's operating funds. Plus there's an annual pavement markings contract capital project. And we're hoping to combine some of those funds with this initiative so that we can. I think pavement markings will be an important part of what we're doing with this. I don't, I don't know that if we hadn't had something planned, but we can bring back something in January. So these are our early wins sort of things where we're just proposing things that are kind of low hanging fruit for us. And the transportation mobility plan will be developed in the near future. And would address a more holistic, better defined set of goals. And then in the fiscal year twenty seven and later, we'll be picking projects and, and setting up a plan to do more system. Like building systems instead of piddling around a little here, a little there. We'll have a transportation mobility plan that would help. Address those kinds of things. Also, I don't know if Linda wants to address the downtown.
So one of the proposed grant matching projects for FY twenty five is to start seeking funding. For what we call the Greater Downtown Bicycle Pedestrian Improvements. And a lot of these have to do with sheroes, crosswalks, signage, really trying to complete that bicycle network downtown. Let bicycles know where it's safe to be. The one component of that project that is not included that will, in the, in this first phase is Castle Street. Castle Street is the one street downtown where we're looking to add actual bicycle lanes and striping for bicycles. That is going to take some, some additional engineering and DOT also has some pedestrian improvement projects. Where Castle intersects with their streets. So we want to make sure that we're aligning with them as, as we're doing that work.
Next, we've got a chance up. One of the things that we heard. I believe in one of our workshops last year was associated with revenue that could be generated. By using some of the Skyline parking slots.
Hopefully this will be the most exciting segment of our day today. Got to start it with that always. I'll continue that line. Good morning, everyone. As Tony alluded to, this subject was brought up at one of the previous budget retreat sessions last spring. Council asked the question and it requested that in the interim until the Skyline South property was sold, that we potentially open it up. For some event parking revenues for the Live Oak Bank concerts. And at the same time, we'd already requested to activate the old skyline or the old Salvation Army property. On the other side here at a twenty North Second Street. So it's just a quick update on revenues achieved and kind of what we're seeing. Thus far this fiscal year at these new properties. First up is the old Salvation Army property, eight twenty North Second Street. Currently thirty two striped parking spaces in this property. We are averaging per event thirty two parkers. So we're filling up those striped spaces nearly every, every event, which is positive. On some of the larger ones, we have allowed the vehicles to spread out into the grassy area. Twice we fit with about fifty plus in the grass area, bringing in about eighty cars in that parking lot over there. We started event operations August sixteenth and in total, we've collected five thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars in revenue there at that property. I think there's nine events total that we've charged for, and these are just the Live Oak Bank concerts. So we're averaging about six hundred and thirty dollars per event there.
Yeah.
That one we do not staff. It's, it's automated. It's a pay by phone, pay by text type situation. When we put a sign out. And then we'll take our already mobilized enforcement on street and sweep through there a couple of times during those, you know, from six o'clock to say eight o'clock. But next up is the Skyline South Parking Lot. I don't know if there's an official address on this one, but I think Google brings up fifteen Brunswick Street. I think Aubrey had a different address to it, but it's the Skyline South Lot here. Two hundred and forty strike parking spaces, same as the Salvation Army property. We started event operations August sixteenth. And then we have generated seven thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars in total parking revenue there. So similarly to Salvation Army Lot, we're averaging about forty parkers per event. I think we had, we had projected a lot more actually going to this lot strictly based on proximity and location to the venue. And what we've seen is because it's a little tricky to get down into, you got to come down front and take a right. And it, it's kind of sandwiched in between two no access areas with the barricades and pedestrian. Moving down Nut Street. As well as they're driving by two of our other parking locations. CFCC student lot, a private lot and two other private lots on the, on the north end here. So it's kind of the last one you're getting to. So I think that's, that's kind of playing into our low numbers here. It is also the first year we've, we've parked event parkers here. And, and with, if it's anything with what we saw at the Skyline Parking Deck across the street here. I think those numbers will bump up next season as people just become accustomed to having that as a parking option.
That lot, the, the big Wake Rock right here, the big, the level lot. When, when these properties across the street are developed and they will be, parking is going to be critical. I'm not so sure. What, what, just off the top of my head, what would park a lot like that with twenty parking spaces, two hundred and forty?
In terms of just revenue growth. I mean, comparable, we would have a little bit different dynamic, but once the market matures. And you know, there's, there's development going up and, and around it. I mean, our second street, the old Lincoln Flynn parking lot's a hundred and fifteen spaces, about half the size. About half the size as this one and we're generating, you know, close to three hundred thousand dollars a year, if not more. At the Lincoln Flynn Parking Lot. Um, and that doesn't have a seven thousand seat amphitheater right down the street from it. So.
Well.
It, it could be a considerable amount depending on what eventually gets developed.
That's a plus.
Absolutely.
I agree, but I mean, we've only got so many spaces in our parking day. And I know that there's a lot of that or part of it or whatever, but I mean, parking is going to be.
Yeah, I think it's one of those things you'll have to look at. What's the, what's the, what's the greater positive there? Selling and developing it and building up or keeping a service parking lot, so.
It's a great annual usage, you know, and it should be a pretty good revenue generator. If you're, what'd you say you were doing a living plan three hundred and?
Three hundred plus thousand dollars. Yeah, it's a, it's a great revenue generator there.
Other thing is uh when we sell that property, we enter into some sort of agreement for public parking associated with it if we need to. Or this lot, yeah, depends on what they're building.
Yes, sir.
So this is also nine events for the.
Yeah, we started the first event in August uh and strictly Live Oak Bank concerts. For, for, for these two, these two lots. And then the larger parking deck across the street, one five five Brunswick Street. Thousand twenty two strike parking spaces. Uh, originally, we started event operations at, at this location. August of twenty twenty three. This year to date, uh, we've generated sixty three thousand three hundred and thirty nine dollars in total event revenues. Uh, we've had twelve events there. There were three events in July that we parked. Parked cars here prior to the other, other two service lots opening up. And here we're averaging two hundred and ninety seven parkers per event. And that's nearly double what we were averaging when we first started operations there last year. So we've, we've nearly doubled our revenue. In the, in the, you know, the year over year. You know, August, September and October months that we've parked there. And then all in at Skyline, we're not just parking events. Uh, you know, we're parking building tenants, parking city employees, we're parking others there all in through. Q three, which would be July, August and September of this fiscal year, we've generated uh close to a hundred thousand dollars in total revenue. So an extra thirty plus thousand in, in, in validation transient and monthly revenue as well. Uh, averaging two hundred and ninety seven per event. We got up to the six hundred mark. Bailey Zimmerman concert uh which was, which was a pretty good number. Uh, we're projecting, I think our goal here in terms of budget projections, we're trying to get to that five hundred mark on average for every one of those concerts. Um, so we're, we're still a little shy of, of our goal there, but we're, we're climbing year by year event by event there. And that's it on the parking lot and really skyline associated.
How do we compare with the convention center parking as far as cost?
Um, it's twenty at all three of these lots. So the deck in both lots are twenty. Uh, the concert rate for the convention center were charging fifteen. So the convention there's five dollars less. And uh, their parking, I don't have that data in front of me, but. If you take out some of the events happening on site there and just look at the concert parkers that end up parking there. They might be bringing in fifty or sixty a night. And those numbers have gone down. That's where a majority of, of the cars were parking. Uh, year one of Live Oak opening up, but now we've, we've activated an additional, you know, thirteen hundred parking spaces here. Yeah, I think it's. Hello, oh yeah, got it, I'm back. And then also not really the original agenda, but I thought it was beneficial for council to hear just a parking revenue update as a whole. Uh, this year, Q one twenty four, actually Q one twenty five. Uh, through September thirtieth of this year, we've generated one point seven million dollars in gross parking revenue. And comparison year over year, uh, last year we had generated one point four millions, so we're about a quarter of a million dollars up. Year over year from twenty five to twenty four. That's without rate increases during that ninety day period. So that's a good apples to apples comparison in terms of activity and, and really. Revenue generation. So this tells you how well we're doing downtown just as a whole.
One time you talked about increasing the rate. Had that been done before?
Yeah, we had a three year recommendation that came to council and it was adopted in the fee schedule. Uh, the current increase that was adopted for FY twenty five is going into effect January first. We wanted to hold that off, hold that back six months, get everyone through the uh. Through the uh holiday season and then put those rate increases out first of calendar year twenty five, January first. Two, on, on street two fifty, January first, going up to three dollars per hour. Yes, sir.
First Skyline. Deck, that seems to be the biggest revenue driver for concerts. Are we uh? How are we advertising that people can park there? Obviously it's new, so a lot of folks probably don't, it's taken some time to turn over. People understand they can't. I mean, we have significant signage.
Uh, signage across the board. This, this keeps going out. Signage across the board at all three properties. Um, Skyline this year. We actually have worked with Live Nation and they put that on their fan page as the preferred parking location. So I think that's helped drive some revenues there and hopefully between the end of the season and the beginning of the two thousand twenty five concert season. We'll have a pre-purchase parking option out there. We can hopefully post on their site as well. That I think will drive further. Further vehicular traffic to Skyline.
Physical signs, so there's sufficient signs. They're new, it's temporary, we just put it down on.
Yeah, it's temporary when Master Sandwich boards, uh, without breaking all Linda's zoning rules. Uh, we, we try to keep things. Within reason. Uh, strategic corners, second front Brunswick and front both sides. We're trying to pull in, we noticed our signage added third and Brunswick brings in a lot of traffic from that direction and then that next intersection is the parking deck. So.
Triathlon. Your live festivals or Latino festivals, all things are happening.
Yeah, not included in that, in, in, in that revenue. Uh, um. But uh, triathlon brought in about three hundred parkers. At Skyline, we didn't open it up at the other lots. Beer and Wine is not a big, big producer each year. I think a lot of those folks Uber. Or smartly, smartly Uber, park at the core downtown, walk down and then eventually end up back at the core downtown. Uh, Latino Festival is not a, not a big producer. Fly forth, we got a, a good chunk of cars at both Convention Center and Skyline. Fireworks, yeah. Uh, surprisingly, we did better last year than this year at Skyline. Uh, the other locations. Market second River Place, we did really well, but we didn't get a lot at Skyline this year. Kind of ends up depending on how. How that layout is for the festivals as well. I think last year River Fest was a little more geared toward the north end, whereas this year they kind of spread it out a little bit more.
We can get these also Google Maps and Apple Maps as parking decks and parking lots if they're not entering on there. I think that may drive traffic during uh Live Oak events, because we know the majority of people go to this, but some come out of town, so they probably just plug in parking decks. Might get that wrapped up. And then if it's not a lot of event night, it's not going to be, we're not going to be charging people for that deck.
Something we're looking at.
Thank you.
There's, there's, there's some specific technology partners out there as well that I mentioned the, the pre-purchase option. Um, not only could we potentially load that on Live Nation's site, but some of those technology partners also. Coordinate that, integrate that into Waze and Google Maps. So if you're, you're coming from Raleigh and you're Google mapping to Live Oak. It's going to take you straight to that location and give you an option to potentially buy that parking before you even drive into the city on it. So, great idea. We're, we're looking at it.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Miss Mortel is going to introduce our next topic.
Presentation. Hope, if you recall, last year we um funded a cost recovery study for parks and markets and local therapies. Today, we're just going to be presenting the results from consultant Mark Carpenter, who is from MGT. Presenting his findings and staff is still pretty much diagnosing. And we'll be coming back to you throughout this process and maybe a few processes in the future with some of our recommendations. Mark.
How do I go through this, this?
Yep.
To the right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's great to be here. Um, again, my name is Mark Carpenter from, from MGT. Um, it's interesting, I was driving in. This morning and um came down Michael Jordan Freeway. And it took me back. I was a student in grad school at Carolina that year that. Michael Jordan hit the shot that won the national championship. How time flies when you're having fun. All right, well, um, I wanted to just kind of hit the highlights. Um, and answer any questions that you have from our perspective. Basically. We were asked to perform a user fee study and we want to talk a little bit about what that is. And then what the objectives of the study were, talk a little bit about approach and methodology. And then give you an overview of uh the findings and recommendations. Again, this, the recommendations, it's, it's a living document, the cost recovery document that we provided to staff. And we know that those, uh, there needs to be more discussion on the policies associated with those, but I just kind of wanted to hit the highlights for those uh. For you today. So what is a user fee study? I mean, I've been doing these user fee studies um since the late nineteen eighties. Here in North Carolina, started out working in Raleigh, doing this work um with uh local governments across the state. And have worked pretty much across the country in these types of studies, but basically. It's assessing what it actually costs to provide these services. Um, and typically speaking, governments charge up to, but not more than what it costs to provide those services. And as you can see here, I don't need to read it to you, but it, it is a way to ensure whether your fees meet those requirements. And then it also gives you uh good information, uh documentation uh to defend. How, how those, those recovery levels are set um and to help you make those cost recovery decisions. So what were the specific objectives here? We were asked to look at the cost recovery philosophy that's included in your comprehensive parks recreation and open space master plan. That was performed by a, another consulting firm. Our review showed that the recommendations that they had in there, many of those are best practices, ones we've seen over the years. I'll give you a, a couple of examples in a minute from other places. Um, but uh, again, we, we felt that. The, the recommendations and information contained in that master plan were consistent with what we'd seen, you know, across North Carolina and the country. The second thing that we did is we send a lot of uh thanks goes to staff who helped pull a lot of this information together for us. In terms of cost analysis, but we were asked to uh ultimately look, I think about twelve different parks and rec programs. Uh, or activities or groups of programs that we were asked to look at. And then we were asked to identify those cost recovery options, and I'll talk about that in a second. Develop that uh fee policy document or the cost recovery policy, if you will. And then obviously present those to everyone. So here really, again, I don't need to read this to you, but as an overview. We looked what those fee services are. We folk, we focused on, well, not just labor based fees, but. Um, fees that were both direct and indirect, the costs that were directly associated with the, with the programs. As well as the administrative fees that um overlaid those. We kind of look at it as like peeling back layers of an onion to, to look at all the different cost components that are included. In that cost analysis. Then, as I said before, um, look at those subsidy levels, see how much is costing versus what your revenues are. And then as you go down there, pretty much present those findings and recommendations uh to you all. This might be a little bit hard to see for some folks, but this is kind of the overview that I wanted to share with you that's in our report. So currently you've got inland greens golf, the tennis complex, et cetera, as. Major program areas or groups of program areas. Column A there, those are the costs associated with that uh activity, what your current revenues are. And then what the subsidy is. As you can see, you all recovering overall down there at the bottom. Approximately nineteen percent of your costs. What we typically see and try to recommend in recovery and parks and rec. Is somewhere between twenty five and thirty percent recovery overall. Again, that's going to vary depending upon the programs. But you can see there's some room for you guys to uh identify some additional revenue. Um, we'll show in, in a minute some more details, but in this particular case, what we assume was is that. If you took all these areas and all of them did have opportunity to increase revenues. You increased each of those revenue areas by fifteen percent. That you uh generated another hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars approximately, assuming that your uh. Activity levels remain the same. Um, you know, I've worked in other places where folks said, oh, well, our recreation center fees are really low. Compared to everybody else. We need to raise them up. Well, they got more revenue for those, for those increased fees. But at the same time, it decreased participation. So you, there's a balancing act in a lot of these fees that you. That you guys are best uh to analyze those once um you, you see these policy uh recommendations that we've made. So here's a, a very uh quick overview. We say that the different programs that were looked, that we looked at here in Wilmington, there's five different tiers. Starting with the broadest benefit in level one, down to the most individual benefit in level five. And you can see there in those different tiers, um, what we are showing as approximately what you should. The range that you should uh use to, to get recovery. So your goal will be in tier two. To recover somewhere between twenty and fifty percent. In tier five, that's strictly straight on. This is a hundred percent or more cost recovery. When, when there are big like amphitheaters and, and you're charging tickets to. Sporting events or entertainers or what have you, those are the types of things that we would see that'd be over, potentially over recovery. Because you're going for that particular event. I just wanted to give you, you know, a couple of different examples. I know there's a lot of words on these charts, but. This comes from a couple of different places, Rollsville here in North Carolina and then Three Rivers Park District up in Minnesota. You can see these cost recovery py- pyramids are pretty similar in terms of the different tiers that they have. Um, and the, the one that we identified for your cost recovery policy is very similar. Um, but you can see here that starts at the bottom, like in Rollsville, they start between zero and twenty five and those ranges are fairly narrow. We recommended that your ranges be higher, uh wider, just to give you some flexibility as you look and analyze those programs. But again, that's something that the staff will work on with you all um as you move forward. But you can see that this Three Rivers Park District, this from, comes from a study back in, in two thousand and one. So these types of concepts have been around for a while. Um, this is not anything new and earth shaking. It's something that is very common that we see here in North Carolina and across the country. So again, here are the different tiers. You can see community benefit, you know, basically. In, in, and this, I pulled this from our, from our policy document that we, that we prepared, the draft policy document we prepared. You know, those typically, typically the community benefit is you, you don't charge anything or very little. Up to that tier five where fees are often established based upon the market, right? So, and then everything in between. So it's basically a mix between an individual benefiting and the community benefiting. Uh, throughout those five tiers. And I think this is my final slide here before I open it up for questions or comments. You know, here are the different areas that we looked at. Um, our recommended tiers for these. Uh, you can see, say the inland greens golf, that's considerable individual benefit there. Um, our recommendation is that you set your fees between seventy and a hundred, and I think you're now recovering about eighty. So you still have room to increase those if you, if you desire. And I think in, in the slide I showed you earlier, that a fifteen percent adjustment would generate some additional revenues. But certainly not get you to the maximum of that range. So you can see across here, we looked at, at, at various programs that are in various tiers. And again, that, like I said before, those are, are flexible, it's a living document, the, the cost recovery policy, you may change them from year to year. What we typically see are these cost recovery documents become part of the budget document where there's fiscal policies, for example. Um, I, I worked in the city of Rockville, Maryland and over the last fifteen years or so where they have. The, those tiers and the, and the policy that they, that they have for cost recovery, not only in parks and rec, but in. Development services and other areas where the, where the recovery levels may be different. Um, to the city of Dallas, Texas, where I've spent a lot of time working with them. Where they have that, they have financial policies where they. Have every four years, the council requires that one quarter of the user fees in the department, in, in the, in the city. Um, are analyzed, um, and costed out and, and gone through this process where you're looking at what the costs are versus what the revenues are. So that's kind of the overall summary. I'll say one more thing and I'll, I'll be quiet. We did also include, uh, the cost recovery models, the cost analysis models for the staff to use moving forward. So as you add programs or change programs or you increase the budgets or decrease the budgets in certain ways. We have, you all will have tools that you can internally do the cost analysis, you don't need to hire. A, a consulting firm to do that, you'll, you're, will give you a, a user manual and of course I'll be happy to. Answer any questions that staff has as they move forward, but, but. Not only are we giving you this information, we've given you the tools as you move forward. Uh, here in Parks and Recreation to, to do more detailed cost analysis in the future if you desire or. Cost analysis based upon budgetary, uh, functional changes.
This is what we're considering putting into next year's budget with regards to. Moderate changes in the fees, we're certainly not going to go to a hundred percent of. The recommendation, but we're certainly going to look at a fifteen percent increase, as Mark mentioned. Uh, to, to be able to begin to, to recover that cost. More importantly. Starting in the Parks and Recreation Department, which is where folks generally expect, uh, fees and charges. We will start to look at other areas of service delivery within the city where we already charged something or perhaps should charge something. Uh, for a fee, for example, uh, barricades delivered to a particular event or to. Uh, a particular location, those kinds of things. Um, perhaps, uh, maybe don't shudder too much. Um, you know, uh, support associated with major events such as triathlons and those kinds of things. So we'll be trying to, to do more cost recovery mainly to balance what is paid for by the. By the overall taxpayer, the general taxpayer for public good versus the individual, uh, event. That actually sees a very specific, uh, benefit from that. So we were looking at it.
They would say are traditional, or are festivals such as the Zali Festival, River Fest. Um, our parade, St. Patrick's Day Parade, and okay, gay parade. Um, those are typically utilizing, and we have this, and especially we can tell you how, how many hours it costs is taking, but. Most specifically, uh, public safety and public works in terms of the street divisions. We mentioned the barricades, we do charge for barricades, um, currently or, um, public works does as part of those events. But there hasn't been an analysis where we apply. It, this methodology and the tiers and suggests the cost based on a philosophy. So I think that's what we should look at. So those events in addition to what you mentioned, Ironman and the. I mean, there's a, yeah, there's a, a lot of smaller ones, I would say this, you know, don't have the same amount of impact. Those were typically, for example, with an iron man. With the volume and type of intersections that are shut down for that. You need a police presence, though, while a lot of those, um, some of the smaller races. We require those barricades to be manned, but they can be manned by volunteers with the organization associated with that. Encino Park is managed by the hammerheads, so they have their own schedule, which is. Um, in part guided by the advisory board that we created to oversee that.
And with the tennis and.
Right, so, uh, they listed the tennis complex as a tier two and that is along with some of the other programs. The number there was assessed in some cases because there's multiple programs there. And some are more of the purely individual benefit, like a tennis clinic, clinic. Um, but others are more of the community benefit such as, um, school teams practice there. We've seen the programs there, we have tournaments there. This weekend and last weekend, statewide tournament that's bringing in four million dollars of economic impact. So within a specific site or civic program, there can be multiple activities that fall in different ranges of tiers.
And, and Mark's initial analysis that I saw is draft included in Sino and, and Lava couple of. Yes, and, and we asked him to drop those out because those are outliers for us. Uh, they just drove up the percentages, you know, overall percentages. These items, these particular, uh, locations that he's looked at are ones that are more, uh. Uh, common with regard to our particular service delivery. And we wanted you to see where we were versus where we actually wanted to be and then the increments that we would be looking at going to. To be able to try to build that, to be able to do a little more cost recovery. Again, this is one of those things that's trying to take some of the pressure off of the tax rate in terms of user fees. It certainly won't, you know, be a huge benefit, but every little bit helps. Other questions? You want to take a break, Mr. Mayor? One of the things that, uh, we heard during, uh, budget development last year. Was that by the time you got, uh, the community services, uh, allocations to the outside agencies. Before you, uh, you felt like you might want, might want to have a little more input into the process. So what we wanted to do this year, we have the Economic Development Partners. We wanted to talk to you a little bit about what our process is. Uh, in terms of how we, uh, solicit those, how we make recommendations to you for awards. And then see, uh, what kind of changes you might want made in terms of that. Or whether you wanted us to proceed with the process as well. So. Uh, I'll be overseas, the Economic Development Partnership for us and we'd let him do the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. I'll start with an overview if I can change slides here. There we go. First, we'll just look at the program as a whole and what we did in terms of changes the last. Three-year cycle, this, this came out, hard to believe it's, it's been three years. So I haven't been with the city too long, but I've, I've seen a few of these cycles and it's always a, a subject of, of debate. Uh, it's gone through some transformation here, when I took this position. Um, some significant transformations took place, namely what you see here in terms of the separation of service contracts. Versus entities that we were placing within the competitive process. So we had three entities, firms, WDI, WBD and Film Commission. They given their longevity of, um, working with the city and the types of services that are provided. We felt as though those firms, uh, fit much better under professional services contract versus under a competitive process. For civic partnerships, along with organizations that did things that were significantly materially different than these organizations did in terms of. Economic development. So we put those professional service contracts on a five-year cycle, council approved those three years ago. And those contracts on the left have two more years left on their, their terms. Uh, the other ten entities that are currently funded under our competitive process total about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. I break them into two broad categories, uh, three of them are in entrepreneurial support services. And the remaining seven are cultural or tourists, let's call them a sales tax sort of driven type spending. Um, grants. So a quick recap of which organizations are in which categories. We have UNCW, Center of Innovation and Entrepreneurship. Uh, in entrepreneurial services category, they receive fifty thousand dollars a year as well as YWCA. He's been a longstanding partner of the city's under this partnership and they also receive fifty thousand dollars a year and have for three years now. And then Genesis Block was a new entry this last cycle at twenty-five thousand dollars a year. The other seven organizations you, you see here on the slide, I, I won't read them each, I'll just point out the. The newcomers to, um, to the, the civic partnership grant program. And the only newcomer we had under this category was Wilmington Symphony Orchestra, which came in at twenty thousand dollars a year. All the others are, um, were, were past recipients of this grant. And the amounts you see all the way on the right-hand side of the slide have been consistent, relatively consistent with what they've received in the past. So I know as, as Tony mentioned, there's been quite a bit of conversation around. How we execute the process for determining which entities receive what amounts. Um, you'll, please forgive me, I've mixed up something on the slide here. Our grant process, oh no, it got corrected on the slide, but it's incorrect, I think in your packets. Our grant process typically puts out a request for applications in December. The counties recently began theirs in November. Uh, we do ours every three years, the county does theirs annually. Um, I've highlighted the other differences in red versus our process versus the county's process. As I know from past discussions on this topic, um, council members are interested in how the county executes the same, same type of program. And some of the, the key differences I, I point out are that the county describes general criteria. That they are trying to achieve. They do not get too specific into exactly what types of economic development they're, they're trying to achieve. We had a heavy focus on jobs in the last cycle we put around, whereas the county will put broad categories like increasing tax base. Uh, recruiting, retaining and growing existing businesses, things of that nature. Whereas our criteria is very described, prescribed and, and I'll have another slide on here on that in a minute. Um, and then the other main differentiator is we have historically formed a selection committee. Made up of staff members, anywhere from three to five staff members, five is what we did for the last cycle. And we use the, uh, application, request for application criteria that was spelled out to score based on. Again, the, the criteria that was put in the applications, uh, criteria that we had, and I can go through that, but there was quite a bit of information in there. Whereas the county, uh, has a process which the county manager looks through with the supportive staff. The applications that are received makes a recommendation and then the, the board approves it from there. So a bit more of a simplified process. So this is just, I know it's, it's not meant to be read, but it's meant to just show how succinct the county's requests for applications are. They have, um, very succinct eligibility criteria, the evaluation criteria. As you see there is just a few lines of text, they don't, um, require, their application is made up of two pages. Uh, just a few questions to answer, approving your eligibility, basic functions such as that. Whereas ours in the past has been, um, a bit more complex. We've asked folks to describe the estimated number of, of jobs they think they'll produce, what wage categories those were in, what job sectors those might be in. We'll ask them to do other things such as, you know, describe milestones and try to quantify a return on investment, which quite honestly and. In dialogue with these different civic partners, they have a very difficult time doing, especially given the amounts that they're receiving. Which are in the, the low tens of thousands of dollars, it's, it's hard to, uh, want to tie ROI to investments like that. Especially when you're talking about creating jobs and, um, things of, of that nature. So if, um, y- you haven't picked up on it already, I am advocating a bit for more of a simplified process. I think this is more of an art contest than a math contest, it's a judgment call. It's something that you look for entities and applications that strategically align with what the city's trying to accomplish at the time. And you make it more approachable and easier for applicants to participate and then make a judgment call from there. Uh, that said, there is a wide range of differing, we'll call it different levels of council involvement that, that could take place. Uh, there are programs similar to this and say human services that, uh, the. The board can appoint, uh, selection committee members and that the selection committee members can come up with the criteria and make the judgments, place the weights. That can be made up of subcommittee and council, that can be put on staff, there's a number of different ways to handle it. And depending on the program and depending on the local units, uh, I've seen a, a pretty wide range of, of options there. Which I think is, is why the manager wanted to, to bring it up for today. But I did want to, to put my recommendation on there that this is, this is a, an exercise that. Um, lends itself to want to try and differentiate this very wide range of services. And benefits that these organizations provide us and really try to tie it to a number that's defensible. But again, given the very wide range of activities they participate in, it's, it's very hard to compare those apples with oranges, with pineapples and so forth. So, uh, that's, that's the, the basis of my recommendation for simplification, but happy to, um. Consider other options and, and input from council.
Simplify the process to be more in line with the way the county's doing it, it's also going to benefit the, the providers who are having to. Instead of basically do two separate sets of paperwork for a limited amount of resources that they're receiving. Pretty similar, uh, application process.
I see two folks on our list who are not on the city's list. How many, do you know how many folks are on the city's list that are not on our list? I'd have to add those, uh, but there are, there are certainly differences. Um, I think from this list up here on the slide currently, Cuculoros is also funded by the county. As is the Wilmington Symphony Orchestra, but I believe that to be it. Don't think there are any others. Now, there might be some other organizations that are funded through the county's human services grant program. That I'm missing that have eligibility and criteria that apply to that versus more of the economic development side. But on the economic development agency side for the county, just the symphony and Cuculoros. And none of the entrepreneurial services, uh, provider civic partners up here are funded by the county. Not as of the last fiscal year. Okay, I could, I could be missing that, I'll double check. So in the past, we've just tried to take a wide cross-section of staff members. Uh, Tony McEwen was a part of it last year, as was, I believe, um, Veronica. Carter Edwards, and I'd have to double check on the, the other two are, are escaping me at the moment.
You picked the five?
Yeah, yes, sir, I did.
So next time will it be the same five or?
My city manager would do it now rather than be under your own. Or we delegate it.
I mean, given the wide range of activities, we, we tried to spread out the participation across different departments and different, you know, demographics and focuses. So the, I think we, we try to aim for a diverse, uh, set of folks looking at it and ultimately work with the city manager to provide a recommendation.
I just think Aubrey is so much more in Scotland, he's, he's got much better.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
One of the things we heard last year, uh, at the close, especially with the budget workshop process and budget adoption process, was the question about affordable housing and the amount of money that at that time was sitting in fund balance, uh, available for use. And so what we wanted to do, what I tasked Tom out with you and, and you worked with Rachel, was to, to come up with a policy that would somewhat mimic our fund balance policy for the overall general fund. If there is an amount, uh, if there is, uh, revenue in the fund balance above a certain amount, that that amount, that, that amount above that, that threshold would then be able to be moved over and used for one-time expenditures, debt service reduction, whatever the case may be, but we could use it for one-time, um, one-time use. That way we would, uh, eliminate the concern of having too much money put back for affordable housing, but then also committing, remain true to our commitment for, uh, putting one penny of the tax rate towards affordable housing. Tom and, uh, probably Rachel instead of Tom. Um, Tom, Tom also said at the same time, he said, well, that's good. He said, but we also need to put some targets in there. What, how many affordable units will we expect to be able to get on an annual basis, say over a five-year period? So, uh, I let them run with it and they came up with, I think, a, a pretty good recommendation. So, uh, with that, we'll turn it over to Rachel and, and let her talk about what she and Tom and everybody else.
Thank you. Uh, so to start out, uh, this comes up all the time. We want to just set the playing field a little bit by saying what we mean by affordable housing. So we know that from a policy standpoint, no one should be paying more than 30% of their income for housing, uh, to, to not be housing cost burden. But in this context, we are really talking about homes that are affordable to households earning between 30 and 80% of the area median income. Shown here is that income chart. So for a household of four in the metro area of the city of Wilmington, we're talking about $80,000. So just wanted to set that, uh, out first. Uh, so the Housing and Neighborhood Services Department offers a variety of programs. Uh, we have our homeownership initiatives, which include down payment assistance and second mortgages, housing counseling that when folks graduate from our housing counseling, they're able to take advantage of other opportunities through the state and private lenders for additional funding to purchase their homes. Our Healthy Homes, which is a minor intervention grant through HUD, as well as Owner Occupied Rehab to preserve our housing stock. Uh, our rental rehab program where we are able to produce new rental units on a small scale basis. Our supportive housing production and of course our gap financing for the large affordable housing developments. The history of city funding for affordable housing goes back decades as, since we've been receiving federal funds. But really wanted to start this conversation off, um, from fiscal year 22, following the Joint Ad Hoc Committee, which later became a permanent workforce housing advisory committee with New Hanover County. In fiscal year 22, council assigned, um, a third, $3.5 million, uh, one-time funding for affordable housing. Again, this funding for affordable housing had been going on for decades, but this was, uh, an infusion of a larger amount. In fiscal year 23, that is when that one cent value policy was adopted as well as an additional $1.5 million for one-time funding. Those two buckets of one-time funding have both been allocated out to both Canopy Point as well as Avenue Flats more recently. Additionally, um, just wanted to show you a snapshot beyond general funds and the one cent value. Uh, other funds from the federal and other one-time funding from American Rescue Plan funds have gone to, uh, support a number of developments, starting with Canopy Point, as I mentioned earlier, Sterling Reserve, Starway Villages, the Sparrow and Avenue Flats. We wanted to show you the number of units as well as the investment that you have put into these projects. As what, in addition to the project costs, you can see the per-unit subsidy. These projects vary in type, whether they are low-income housing tax credits or supportive housing projects. And so the investment per unit does vary. And so that is just something to keep in mind. Uh, the lower the income that's being supported, like the Sparrow, the Good Shepherd Project at the former fire station is going to require a deeper subsidy because it's helping a lower income group of people. Affordable rental projects are possible through this soft debt that we're offering. These investments that I mentioned are all loans. The repayment of those, when possible, um, again, when we're getting into lower income, the, that does, model doesn't always work, but they're reinvested into future projects. This is a slide that the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency that issues tax credits put, put together. And it really shows the way that a thousand dollar per month rent is made up of hard debt with a small amount of equity. Whereas housing credit project really has that lower rent because of the soft debt that's included. So the equity and soft debt are the keys to creating affordability. We wanted to show you a few recent examples of where city investments have supported some of these larger projects, but also where the other funding is coming to show that we are just a layer. So for Sterling Reserve, that's a 9% tax credit project for seniors between 30 and 80% of the area median income. It's a $14 million project and the city invested 1.44 million dollars. In addition, there's a permanent mortgage and of course the majority is made up of that tax equity credit. Avenue Flats, which is the most recent project you saw, is a 4% tax credit project. This was a 184 units or will be, I should say, for between 30 and 80% of the area median income. Much larger project cost of almost $60 million. And here you'll see that a lot of more local subsidy in addition to the city's investment, where New Hanover County recently awarded a $1.5 million investment and a $4.7 million. I don't know if they were granted it or I know they've applied through the, uh, New Hanover Community Endowment. The remainder of the funds are through tax equity, deferred developer fees, and of course a permanent mortgage. Finally, the Sparrow, which is a supportive housing project, uh, the former fire station, as I mentioned, consisted of HUD Home American Rescue Plan Funds specifically, uh, designed for supportive housing projects. It also included this proceeds from the sale of Optimus Park for pre-development costs and the value of the property conveyance. This project was also made possible through a grant from the State Employees Credit Union Foundation and some funding through the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency. All that was to show that the different investment types that helped make these projects possible. We wanted to show you at our last budget session in May, we showed a nearly $9 million fund balance carryover. That included the one-time funding, our one-cent allocations and program income and investment balance. Since then, uh, the following funds were allocated or have been budgeted to be spent this fiscal year. Staffing operating expense, expenses, um, an owner occupied rehab program, the $4 million investment into Avenue Flats and an investment into our Healthy Homes program. And so that's about $5.3 million. In the pipeline, which I'll get to in just a minute, we have about $4.7 million in projects. So our current balance is 6.9 million. That included the funding that we've received this year as well as some of the other funding that comes in. So again, where we are with that general fund, one cent and one-time balance specifically for gap financing. Again, our, our general funds can fund a variety of programs, including our HOT program, Owner Occupied Rehab, Healthy Homes and this gap financing. We have about, like I said, $4.7 million in projects. One is for Cape Fear Collective. It's a little bit different. It's rehabilitation. So we're looking to preserve some existing naturally occurring affordable housing units to reactivate them and get them back into the affordable housing market. And then Kelly Development has submitted an application for $3.8 million for the new construction of 303 mixed income units. This project will consist of 128 rental units, senior rental, as well as a number of for sale townhomes. This project, um, we wanted to kind of give you a timeline just so that, we've been talking about it for a while. I've been telling you that we've had some projects in the pipeline, just for context. The developer came to the city probably close to a year ago in January, it would be, uh, with a concept of, hey, I'm looking at this property, what can we do with it? And it's taken this long to get through to where we are. Um, they've been able to move forward with the contract of the property, um, submitting some engineering work and really getting here because they knew that they could apply for this funding, that would be able to be an opportunity. And so while we're reviewing that project, it's also going through its zoning entitlements. We expect it to be before you for consideration, um, from a zoning perspective as well as a funding perspective in early '25. So just really showing from concept to when you see these projects, it's over a year. As, uh, you heard, we wanted to tie back a goal. Um, the best starting point is the Bowen Report. We talk about it all of the time, this housing needs assessment. And so this, um, report that you see a lot of developers show you, shows the current need, um, for units across the income spectrum. Some will be provided by the market, some will need assistance to get there. The number is large. We know that we're not going to get there on our own and, uh, we just wanted to use this as a baseline for our goal. And so it's just a, a shot goal of 1,000 affordable or workforce housing units in Wilmington over four years would be an investment of about 250 units annually. We are on our way. Um, we've made a number of investments, as I mentioned, over 500 so far, 568 have been supported. And again, the majority of these investments are loans that will be reinvested back into future projects. So how do we get there?
Yes. One second. How is this 1,000 number compared to the number that we were given at our homelessness task force?
Uh, great question. So the homelessness task force slide, um, this, this visual, if you remember. Yeah, so that one, um, we were looking at the rapid rehousing needs at that point, which is a little bit different, um, than some of the contexts we're talking about in that we knew that there was a gap of about 800 units, um, for those populations. And so, um, typically, and Tommy can correct me, but typically with the rapid rehousing, we're looking at under 60% of the area median income. With our goal of 1,000, we're getting up to that 80% area median income. So it's capturing more units than, than just there. And for reference from that unsheltered, we were looking at a permanent supportive housing gap or supportive housing gap of somewhere between 25 and 75 units.
Sorry, what's 75?
25 to 75. And so that's where we, uh, sort of looked at what's a good mix of, uh, units that would make up that 1,000. Looking at what we've done in the past two years and looking forward, where we looked at how much, based on our recent investments, what would it take to get to that? Um, we're looking at about $11.6 million investments to meet these goals over the next few years. That would be, um, split between the tax credits of nine and 4% and additionally the supportive housing. That $2.1 million could support 30 units. So it picks up a portion of the, what was identified in the unsheltered. Uh, the strategies that we're talking about today do, um, align with our strategic plan. We wanted to just, where we were coming from when we were thinking through this, uh, and our newly adopted strategic plan, looking at creating a thriving, inclusive, affordable community of neighborhoods. This one cent dedicated helps fund programs and leverages our private investment. And allowing these funds to carry over allows funds to accumulate, to react to changing market conditions and to attract larger projects. Over the past few years, we have seen larger projects come forward because these funds are available. And so it has really changed the conversation between the city, the county's funding and of course the endowment. We're also looking to achieve organization excellence by aligning, um, the organization and community needs to make efficient use of available funds. So having this cap could allow funds to be available, to be deployed for other community needs. So the policy recommendation before you today is to create a ceiling for affordable housing reserve fund. This came again from that $9.6 million carried over from fiscal year '25, uh, between the gap financing and the one-time funding. Um, where we sort of started from this policy recommendation, community development block grant funds currently have a 1.5 accumulation requirement. Um, so you can't not carry over more than 1.5 times your award into future years. I will say that they are finally looking to update some policies with the block grant because they know the value of accumulating these larger funds for larger long-term projects. And so what the, um, federal government has been looking at is, instead of having that timeliness requirement, as they call it, having more regular check-ins of progress and saying, yes, you're not spending that money today, but you have something that you're working on and you're able to show performance measures along the way. Recommendation is to set a reserve policy for 2.5 years. That would, if you look at where we are with today's dollars, that would be about $5.7 million that we would, uh, have as a maximum for the carryover. So again, the excess fund, undesignated fund balance for one-time expenditures, um, looking at what we see as the one cent value today, again, that would be that 5.7. And so that is where we are. We're hoping to get some guidance. If you think this is on the right track, um, any feedback or anything else you may think? Yes, sir?
I certainly appreciate the recap out there and all the thought that's, has gone into this. To the first, uh, slide that has projected 11.6 million investment to meet goals. What, what's the timeline of that? I'm just kind of trying to, is that all city investment?
No, that, that's a combination of the city and federal funds. Is if we are able to keep our funds relatively, eh, where we are, we know that they've had slight decreases, but keeping that in mind, if things are on track, we should be at about $15 million over three years, which would allow us to have the staff and operating expenses, fund some of the other in-house programs and support this. So that was a consideration.
And then, uh, with regards to the, uh, the Bowen Report, and this gets referenced a lot and I hear some understandable frustration from the community of Lawrence County. Is there any plan from the city and the county to update this report to see kind of where we stand? I have a lot of felt in the last few years of where we stand in, in real time. From when this report came out.
The county has included the, an update. It will not be through Bowen, but through their comprehensive plan update, they are doing a housing assessment that will be for the city of Wilmington and New Hanover County as well. So that is, um, expected over the next year. They're hoping to have their comprehensive plan in, in about this time next year. Um, so we'll have that update then. But that, it's been updated every other year. We, we think that's a good amount, especially with changing market conditions, so.
Correct. Thank you. Council, council.
Just one more, remember tax credits that are occurring and you had a rally building. Now, is that wrapped up? I mean, this, we talked about it a whole lot and you should, I mean, if years gone by, uh, you, you were lucky, you would get one a year in your, in your area. Is that, is housing financed or is that, is that a good more of that?
We have had developers tapping into the 4% tax credit. It's, they're, they're harder to pencil because they do require additional subsidy because the 9% are the competitive. New Hanover County is the county who would get the award. We are only allowed one per year for their guidelines because of the where we are. We had a hurricane credit one year, we've received two. So we will only see one 9% project annually, if that applies. Where right now we have two potential 4% projects, um, that will be submitting applications. So that is where, why we're seeing increased activity.
It's the gap funds that council created, that's really created.
Yes, yes.
That's the inducement.
Yeah, 4% were not possible without the additional funding that's available. Yeah, four percent were not possible without the additional funding that's available.
Years gone by, I've been involved in several and three or four developers were done by a piece of ground and you'd have to tie it up for a year. And then everybody waits until the beauty contest is over and you get one. If you were lucky, it always you weren't guaranteed to get that one. So those days were kind of behind us.
We will still see that. We have a lot of folks that will start circling applications. Start for the nine percent projects they're due in May. So they start pretty much around now, January, especially if it needs a rezoning. And so they'll start circling. Has anyone talked to you? What's the what's the feel? Because again, not people don't want to invest into a project with too much upfront costs. And one of the criteria this year, the tiebreakers, is local investment for nine percent projects. You will get additional points if you're getting local investment.
Are we, are we doing any more with maybe an endowment fund? So are we talking, are they really talking with us that kind of let's say we can help them or what?
We have been, as we, I believe we updated you through an email. It's been quite a few months where the endowment has looked at three buckets. The capacity building to help our the nonprofits build the capacity to be able to deliver the production side where they're funding some of these projects like Avenue Flats, as well as a third where they're want to look at what a fund would be. There are certain restrictions with the endowment where they can only fund government or nonprofits. And so what would a fund look like? Whether it's an investment fund, a housing trust fund type of activity, how are other communities doing it? What makes sense? And so we have been part of those conversations. They have slowed, they had they had a delay in the report out because they have hired a new CEO. And so they are expected to deliver information to their board in late December. And so we will be updating any of that to you all as well at that time. But it's still looking at what would that look like? There's a lot, there are a lot of considerations of how our funding functions, both from a federal and local, the different statutes and regulations and not wanting to dirty their money. And how do how can it make sense? And what how does that layering look? Similar to some other projects. So. Yeah, yeah, that that project's a perfect example.
This is a great partnership in the private sector.
Council is to be congratulated for the zero to sixty in no time flat in terms of the amount of money that you put to it. And being able to put the one penny towards it has given us a good deal of flexibility with our programs that we don't have with the federal dollars. So I think it's an incredible gift to be able to do that. What I am concerned about is the buildup of of funding over time. And the same thing with our fund balance that people generally say, well, you've got all this money. So what we wanted to do was to be able to provide you a threshold above which you could be able to remove that. But this also recognizes that there are more tax credit programs generally coming into the area and requiring or asking for greater amounts of subsidy. So I think this is a good compromise to be able to do that. But I think, again, council is to be commended because there are a lot of folks in this area that wouldn't be in the housing business were it not for us. And having worked out in the western part of the state where there was a trust fund, I I see the activity going on here close to what was out there with the trust fund. So I'm very proud of the city.
I'm glad, no, I totally thank you. Every one that I've ever personally involved in or company I was working with, it's all multi-family. And that's what we see now. Is there ever anything on the horizon where it would be something other than multi-family or is that part of the criteria that has to be?
Tax credits can be scattered site. They're harder to pencil. Not we don't see that as much. With our funds, they are available for other uses. The Cape Fear Collective is a perfect example where they are scattered site single-family homes. And so it it will just vary on what the the folks come to us with. But we are seeing that it's a lot easier to get the projects to pencil when they're multi-family.
Even if it's not a single family or fifteen or whatever, something that's maybe two units attached, you know, with a cluster of that kind of thing versus vertical.
And we have an in-house program that helps support that where it's smaller units, single family or maybe duplexes where we are able to loan, it's two hundred thousand per unit. And that's where we're seeing that a a great return and great activity.
Rachel mentioned Kelly Development. We just want to maybe talk a little bit more about that.
It's Starway, the the folks for Starway.
Academy, but that one in some ways is your question, Charlie. It's multifamily, single family, it's some homeownership, it's mixed income. Just talk a little bit about that.
Yeah, so that that project is a it's the MLK and car, the the property where encampments had been previously. And so when they were looking at the site, they wanted to do a tax credit, but they knew there was a great amount of land and they didn't want to just concentrate apartments. And so they are mixing these a townhome project with that. And so it'll have that mixed income mixed type in a lot of ways in an area that could use the single family as well as the multi-family.
I think also, if I remember correctly, they're proposing ten single-family housing units that will be done by Habitat Humanity. Manity. So part of what would be important for us to get the outcomes you may want is to continue to have that flexibility with general government funds so that we can incentivize those kind of developments. We're historically, manager's office and Rachel, we tell developers, let's don't concentrate all of the low-income housing in one part of the city. If we can do mixed income development, that's better. And for the community in the long run. So if we had these kinds of resources, we could at least incentivize those kinds of developments.
Yes.
Okay.
When are we going to be making our list of legislative priorities for the Congress?
We will be doing that hopefully in December or early January.
Okay, maybe we have something relatively specific about tax credits for that kind of development.
We we have a workforce housing advisory committee in December where we can put that on the agenda to receive their feedback on any guidance they may have to be able to provide that as well.
That'd be great.
Scattering this kind of housing out around the city takes a lot of political will from this body. And I've seen places where they've done it, you don't, you don't, you don't even, I mean, you know it's there, you know it's there, but you don't know it's there. It just blends in so nicely. So and it's good for the social fabric.
We're on the right track? Are you comfortable?
I'm sorry, just a minute.
No, go ahead.
You know, we're keenly interested in this. Do you feel comfortable at twenty half times accumulation or is there some amount you want to contemplate? If, if, I'm only, that would be this is driving a lot of the conversations from last year would be if we're consistently year over year pushing a bunch of money into the fund balance because we're not able to use, yeah, we need to revisit the policy.
Agreed.
I I hope that's not the case. I hope we're able to leverage these dollars and I think we will be. I think you already have a lot of projects, right? I just want to put that into the ether here that if all of a sudden, there's no reason to have additional tax assistance, we're not able to utilize the funds.
Kevin, I agree. He always had a great deal of input about that very day.
Don't put that on.
Kevin brought a lot to this point. I will, I will also say, I I would agree with that completely. But one of the things that that really hit me when I when I approached Tom with this concept was the fact that by the time we talked about that nine million dollars, it was already down to five. And and I I think there is an uptick. If that uptick subsides, I would agree, we need to revisit the policy.
So we'll bring maybe something resolution to your council meeting setting your policy.
Thank you.
Very good. Thanks, Rachel. And Nicole's been very busy with this. So with that, Nicole?
Thank you for welcoming to the literal hottest seat in the house. As you can tell, I am excited to provide an update on the strategic plan that was adopted by council in February. I'd like to start at the beginning and ask you to recall the diverse engagement that went into plan creation. So you may recall that in the summer of twenty twenty two, we began our engagement. All right, back to business, right? So in the summer of twenty twenty two, we initiated our public engagement and that took a variety of experiences. We integrated multidisciplinary focus groups that engaged employee participation as well as our community stakeholders. Additionally, we had some meetings with our future city teams and facilitated their expectations of this document. We interviewed our council and we hosted a community survey. In addition to the public participation plan, we began benchmarking strategic plans and structures of strategy offices across the nation. And that was intentional to inform and integrate best practices, not only into our plan, but into our programming. We provided periodic updates throughout the planning process in the forums of EMT workshops, council work sessions, staff development discussions and agenda briefings. Ultimately, this council unanimously adopted the plan in February. Just as a brief reminder, the plan's intent is to provide a common set of goals for the community and staff. It ensures stability and opportunity for those who live, work and build their businesses in our community. Our guiding principles serve as the framework or the foundation for our plan. Our vision recalls our aspirations for the future. Our mission is the purpose of our work and the values inform the decisions that we're making on a daily basis to improve the quality of life for our community. The strategic plan serves as a roadmap to translate these visions and goals into the organization's work, focus and resource alignment. These strategies trickle into our multi-year department business plans, identifying the support activities that the departments are involved with to advance the strategies into the individual work plans that we as individuals commit to. The success of this plan takes many forms. It's creating a supportive culture across the organization, including our leadership. It includes training the individuals that are participating in this endeavor and making sure that they have the resources to be successful in this endeavor. And in some instances, it may take time informing database decision-making into the future, as well as looking at our resource allocations. On your screen are the five key focus areas outlined in our plan as well as those intent statements. And this serves as the community's priorities for the next five years. As we come forward with interim reports, we're going to provide you updates on these priorities to ensure that they are reflective of the needs and desires of our ever-changing community. Sorry, we had a snag there. This successfully implementing this plan is going to take commitment and dedication across the entire organization, as you can see, outlined in this plan governance diagram. I will briefly go through the anticipated expectations for roles and responsibilities for each of these key players. Please feel free to stop me if you have any questions. So we'll start with council at the helm. This is your adopted plan. We have identified these as the priorities for the next five years. What that looks like from your perspective is we're going to ask you to review our interim reports to really help inform the data-driven decisions that we're asking you to adopt. That may come in the form of a plan revision to make sure that our established priorities align with the needs of our ever-changing community. It may come in the form of taking a look at the resources that we're allocating, making sure that we're approving budget enhancements that are consistent with these priorities and advancing these strategies. It could come in the form of making revisions to our current programs and services that we're providing to fill potential gaps. The stat team is an opportunity for all of those participating in the plan governance to report out and share the work that's being done across the organization. This gets at one of our core values, the collaboration piece. We no longer want to work in silos. We want to be informed and transparent about the activities that are occurring across the organization and understanding where some of the recommendations are coming from and inform that they are in fact data-based recommendations. The stat team includes our core teams, our objective teams, our data owners and our city manager. It's really the opportunity to give a heads up on some of the recommendations that were coming forward and out of this initiative and the data that backs up those recommendations.
And did you say what stat stands for?
It's a statistical terminology, but it's an opportunity to really get at the data-based decisions that we're asking to be considered. The official terminology, I guess, is still under discretion according to some of the people around the table. The city manager is taking the lead on the semi-annual stat meetings. So moving down into our plan governance teams, the core teams kind of spearhead this initiative. They are led by deputy city managers and are staffed by department directors and assistant directors. They are responsible for prioritizing the initiatives and overseeing the success of strategy progression. Examples of work that may occur from this team include finalizing those community outcomes, identifying the goals that we want to establish to ensure that we are in fact progressing those strategies. Additionally, they're responsible for overseeing the work that's being conducted by our objective team. So there is an expectation that there may be some interpretations that come out of this particular team to advance those strategies and remove any roadblocks. The objective teams are anticipated to be cross-departmental in nature and inclusive of a variety of experience and expertise. We're really trying to get at introducing a different perspective at this level. This team would be responsible for advancing our plan objectives and each of the three initiatives that fall underneath that objective. Some examples of work that may be conducted from this team include an environmental recognizing the existing policies and programs that we have on the books, establishing baseline data for consideration and helping to identify any gaps that may exist. Additionally, our objective teams and really the plan governance teams are all internally facing. And we realize that there's a need to partner with external stakeholders. So this group would come up with a list of potential stakeholders to coordinate the recommendations that would be brought before you. The data owners make up the rest group of our plan governance teams. They are also anticipated to be cross-departmental in nature and inclusive of a variety of levels of experience and expertise. This group is responsible for data collection and analysis and will be periodically reporting out on the trends that are coming from the data collection consistent with our goals and our community outcomes. They provide the opportunity to celebrate our successes and also recognize the challenges that may come out of this initiative. So where we are in moving forward and being transparent in this initiative, we have started our core team meetings, regularly meetings since September. Right now, they are coordinating and finalizing the community outcomes and are preparing to man our objective teams or staff our objective teams. We hit on the stat team meeting expectations on a semi-annual basis, utilizing that platform to really inform our performance reports. Something I do want to call your attention to that kind of hits on our innovative core value is establishing dashboards and being transparent in what we've identified as our community outcomes and how they are progressing. These dashboards would be available to the public in any given circumstance housed on our website, but really showcase the challenges that we're experiencing as well as the successes that we're having in. But really showcase the challenges that we're experiencing as well as the successes that we're having in advancing these strategies. In an endeavor of this magnitude, it's so important to celebrate our small successes. So today I'm happy to share some of the achievements that we've made to date. We have integrated our strategic plan into the new employee orientation. It's one of the first documents that they get to see when they join our organization. And they hear about the work that our core teams, our um, objective teams and our data owners are doing. Additionally, we have come up with the implementation plan that's before you this afternoon. We have solidified our core team appointments. We have made introductions across the organization in the forums of department meetings, division meetings. And one-on-one conversations to try to build champions for this process. And um, provide the opportunities that exist to join in this implementation initiative. Additionally, we have partnered with HR to develop a comprehensive training curriculum. Really identifying some of the skill sets that it's going to take to make this a successful endeavor. It starts with things as simple as how to be a good team member. Because so often we work alone in the work that we're doing, but it's important to go back to that basis. Then identifying ways to create meaningful community outcomes that will really speak to. Advancing these strategies as examples. I already mentioned, we're super excited that our core team meetings have commenced and are meeting regularly since September. One of our more recognized achievements to date is going to be the catalyst for change celebration that we hosted in October. It was really an official kickoff to the plan implementation. It provided um, departments and employees across the organization. With a concise understanding of not only plan content, but the opportunities to aid in the implementation process. So we um. In an effort to kind of solicit that interest and share what you could potentially gain to add more to your workload. We hosted a panel session with some professionals that have worked in an endeavor similar to this. Nature and they really spoke to how it advanced the organization, but also the personal benefits that they had. Through professional development and growth opportunities by serving in one of these teams. Additionally, we saw the opportunity to collaborate with our departments and showcase some of the work that they're really proud of that's going on behind the scenes. Planning was present, sharing phase two of their public engagement with the Greater Downtown Plan. HR was present, sharing some of the changes in the benefits that are available across the board. We had public works present, sharing some of the sustainable initiatives that they are working on. So it was really a feel-good moment for the organization. It was an opportunity to share and learn about the work that's being done. Not only um, in budget research, but across the organization. As a result of this effort, we are about two-thirds of the way towards our goal for um, the volunteer component of. Staffing our objective teams. Moving into phase two of our recruitment initiatives, we have started um, leaving the nine-two-nine campus. And engaging some of the off-site departments, some of our field staff that didn't have the opportunity to come and attend our event. We want to make sure that we're communicating the strategic plan and the opportunities that exist to them should they be interested. As a result of those conversations, we've also had some counseling sessions where people are on the fence on what this commitment looks like to them personally before they dive in and fully commit. So those conversations are ongoing and we hope to be fully up and running early in twenty twenty-five. Last slide, I promise. As we're looking forward, uh, these are some of the things that you'll see coming online. We are excited to activate our training curriculum um, the end of this month. Moving into assembling our objective teams with those volunteers that I previously mentioned. In coordination with our core teams to provide some balanced teams. Moving into early twenty twenty-five, we hope to solidify our community outcomes. And come back before council and share those outcomes as well as any other uh, progressions that we have made into the spring months. As we look forward to the summer of twenty twenty-five, we'll move to a more normalized state where we will begin recording and reporting. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. I'm passionate about this.
As you can see, this is a very um, long process and one of which we're building carefully because the foundation will be um. Equally as important as the outcome. And I think that uh, Nicole uh, is working diligently with the employees to be able to make sure that they want to get involved. And that they would contribute. And so I think uh, once we get this training done, uh, then we'll, we'll be able to 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 start working on some community outcomes. Which will give you something more tangible to look at. But we wanted to keep you involved as to where we were in the process because this is probably the second most important thing that you'll be doing all year long, so. Any questions? Laura?
Last person that is keeping you from reading today, so I would be quick. This is uh, where we request a little bit of feedback, feedback that you may not have provided us. At this time, but I want to just review a couple of slides that we've already been through. Let's take it to power. So um, today's staff reviewed the directions. We're going to provide you with some budget considerations that we developed, the strategies that we would like to move forward with and then gather your. Some information from you regarding the times we come back to you with information. And this is a review where we think we're going to be at the end of the year. I apologize, this slide on your packet doesn't have the range. But if you remember the range that we believe that the general fund will have, it's between one point eight million and five point six million. The budget direction, after everything that you've heard today. We believe that the key emphasis for FY twenty-six should be remaining competitive in the workplace. We want to continue our core services at the current levels that they are. We want to continue our five-year CIP infrastructure plan. And then we want to, you know, make sure that our competitive process is going to go forward for the economic and cultural agencies. How are we going to do that? We want to focus the surplus pri- uh, on the top priority, which is the compensation package. We want to find strategic ways for the departments to meet their needs, but with their current operating allocation. So that means we would not be asking for any enhancements other than those things that they are going to give up. Um, and we will make that judgment if we can do that. And then we want to seek other funding, potentially grants, um, and partner with organizations around the city. So with that in mind and what you've heard, are we going in the right direction to align with your preferences? Is there anything else that we're missing? Should we be reviewing other things as we move forward?
One thing. Important to say this, FY twenty-six budget consideration plans, I. We implemented the five-year structure, CIP, CIP. Last year. For this year's budget, maybe just an update in January on on where we stand on the projects that we began. I think that's, you know, see our progress.
Something we always. Something we all see every day, and I know this is not something that's discussed here today, but. Is is the beautification of clothing. I won't say it's fallen through the cracks, but when you ride down the roads. You see, and I know that the main departments. Stacking dishes and what have you, and it's always, you know, it's nice. But that's something everybody enjoys, everybody enjoys. And I would certainly like to see um, something. That we can do to to keep cutting, beauty and stuff, lightways, plants. And I I I never like to throw another city up, but I've been up the cities and they 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 do those things. And I don't know what the tax rate is, I don't care, but there's, there's a long ways we can go. Not little things, but just to beautify our 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 streets and our main corridors, our collector's streets. Take them more attractive, because there's a lot of them out there that just. You know, if you don't agree with me, let me take you for a ride.
All right. Okay, uh, you already mentioned, if you talk a little bit about. The number of employees that we lose. And I've been kind of interested in. Found out why we're not recruiting more people, why are we. You know, getting the numbers that we need to hire. And and I'm always, always interested in the diversity of the number to that.
Another, um, the next slide, another point of topic are the touchpoints that we have with council. If you recall, last year we had a few members who believe we may needed more work sessions prior to the readings in June. We have built in one more work session. You can see that the first three are essentially staffs. We give you and and provide information to you so we can make sure that what we think is going to go forward is aligning with your, your inputs. And then we give, we've done a city manager's recommended budget and the next work session is really councils to help us. Redirect some of the things in the budget if we need to. We have built in one more touchpoint, um, and it would look like this. It will come May sixteenth, potentially, that is right after the recommended budget, the week after the recommended budget. May sixteenth happened to be a Friday, it can be in that week. And then you have the public hearing the following week, and then you have the last work session at the end of May. That gives you two work sessions um, to work through and give staff some time to work through some of your suggestions. Is this acceptable to council? Is there other ways that you'd like us to get information to you? This is more of a feedback question that we have. We want to make sure you guys have enough time with the budget.
He's missing much time in advance too, so. Pardon me, because he was in more time in advance. That's good.
That is all we have for you today. Thank you for your time and your feedback. I appreciate it.
I love you, David. Thank you. I do want to thank you for your time and your careful consideration.
Thank you.